We're good. I'm recording.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Planning Board. Notice of this meeting is published in the local papers, and it is also posted in, on the, excuse me, in the lobby of this building, and it is also, notice is also posted on the township website, and we are being broadcast live on Channel 34, and we are streamed live and can be available on demand on YouTube. This is a quasi-judicial meeting, meaning that the board has powers and procedures that resemble a court of law, and we are obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis for official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate for a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. First thing on our agenda this evening is our roll call.
Okay. Vice Chair Brodak.
I'm here.
Mr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally.
Here.
Ms. Lockman?
Here.
Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Mr. Pierre.
President.
Councilor Schlegel is excused. Ms. Willis?
Here.
Ms., Chair Nguyen?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Niemann?
Here.
Okay. We also have Mr. Neese.
Here.
And for tonight's presentation, we also have Mr. Fisher, Joseph Fischinger, and Mr. Jerry Giosa.
All right. We have minutes from our November 21st meeting.
I received changes to the minutes from Ms. Lockman and Vice Chair Brodak. And are there any other changes? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstention.
Okay.
Okay, and that brings us to the main event, the council referral on Lackawanna Plaza. Before we get started, I would just like to ask our board attorney to just remind everybody of what we're doing this evening with respect to the redevelopment plan.
I have no idea.
That helps a lot. And thank you for clarifying that.
No, actually, as most people understand, and I wrote a memo that I sent last week, the board's role in redevelopment plans and considering this redevelopment plan is fairly narrow. This board is considered the expert on planning for each of the municipalities, and it is the governing body's intention to send or refer the plan to this board to determine whether or not it is consistent or inconsistent with the master plan. If the board reviews the plan and finds that there are several issues, it will include those issues in its report back to the governing body. Normally, we have 45 days to review a plan, but the governing body determined that the board should have 60 days in order to determine the consistency of the plan with the ma, with the master plan. So there is not a whole heck of a lot of guidance to how you go about doing that. I did provide in my memo an analogy to a development application where there is a variance and whether, what the use of the master plan is in considering a variance. But I suspect we may have questions, you may have questions all along, and we'll try to address those as we proceed. But the goal here is, again, to determine consistency or inconsistency with the master plan. It's a very narrow goal.
All right. Thank you. Janice, over to you.
Oh, thank you. What I'd really like to emphasize to the board is, this is an opportunity for you, the board, to review the plan, to make comments. Many of your comments, they're important. Your comments can lead to changes to the plan. So I think in order to facilitate the discussion tonight so we can have a very valid discussion and input, we have not only the, Ira Smith, the architect who helped write the design standards, who will give a presentation about the massing and the design standards. We have Keenan Hughes from Phillips Price Greigle, the planner who wrote the plan, who can talk about how the plan works. We also have Joe Fischinger, who's the traffic engineer who serves the board, who's reviewed the plan. I've given you his initial reports. He's here to talk to you, answer whatever questions you may have for tonight. I can't bring, because they're not, we're not charging an escrow account. I can't bring them back for meeting after meeting after meeting, so I'd, I'd really like to get your questions to them this evening. And Jerry Giosa as well. I know that there are some questions that have been raised in previous meetings about parking and the parking ratios. So I really think the focus should be on getting answers to your questions so that you will facilitate your discussions and can lead to really solid recommendations on the plan. The role, this is a redevelopment plan, so what you can, redevelopment plans give you a lot more flexibility, and the board members who've been on the board for many years, I think you understand that. Because you, in redevelopment, the planning and the regulations go hand in hand. You don't have to rely on, you know, a much larger zoning ordinance. You can write the regulations in the redevelopment plan to achieve the policies that should also be in the redevelopment plan. So I just want to bear that in mind. I've, I've told everybody, let's, let's listen to your comments. Let's have a, a, a good discussion in terms of how can your concerns be dealt with in the plan, and we'll see where it goes. And that can all be included in the report that goes back to the council, because of course, it's the council that adopts the plan. This is not, and I think if anybody's been to the three previous community meetings, this is not a new subject. We've been working on this, planning for this property since 2014 when we were working on the, the master plan. We started working on a redevelopment plan in 2015. So I think a lot of you are familiar with this piece of property. It's, it's enormously important. It's probably close to the geographic center of Montclair. It's near the center of our commercial district, business district. So I think we all understand the importance. So that's why I've brought everybody here tonight to help answer your questions. Also bear in mind that we have another planning board meeting next Monday night with nothing on the agenda except some resolutions and this matter as well. So if you have any questions and we can't answer them tonight, we can always give you the answers next week. We're also taking all the consultants to the Historic Preservation Commission on Thursday, so those of you here from the Historic Preservation Commission, we will be working with you on Thursday, and, and we can really delve more deeply into some of the historic preservation issues at that time. So these are the steps in the process, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to have a lively discussion and get a lot of your concerns addressed.
Janice, I have one question.
Yes.
So you know, we have our redevelopment subcommittee that needs to report to the board. Can you give me the timeframe for when our report would need to go to the board?
Well, we have until February.
Yep, so we'd like to know, you know, it's, Christmas is happening, and we just.
So you have, I would, you have two meetings in Janu, January 9th and January 23rd. Now we have some applications on January 23rd, so I'm, I'm just hoping that that's when we have to wrap it up by the 23rd.
So this board would have to vote on it or make their recommendation on the 23rd of January?
Yes.
Whether it's consistent or not consistent?
Yeah.
And then they'd have to write a report by February 4th to the council?
I don't, I'd have to double check the days.
Yeah, yeah. That's on your, that's on your.
Is that in my, yes, February 4th. Yes.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
We need to vote on a report in sufficient time for it to be delivered to the council on.
By February 4th.
By February. So in other words, that, that January 23rd probably has to be a discussion of an actual report that somebody's drafted before then, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm trying to get, that's what I'm trying to get at. So what is the timing of when the redevelopment subcommittee needs to reproduce a report, and then this entire body needs to produce a report?
Well, why don't we see how the discussion goes tonight, and we can, as, as things go, we can develop a firm timeframe. We're at the very beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, but we're also over holidays, so that's what I'm trying to.
I, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I'd like to start with Keenan Hughes, and he'll give an overview of the redevelopment plan and answer whatever questions you may have on our form-based, form-based approach, et cetera.
Good evening. Keenan Hughes, I'm with Phillips Price Greigle, Laney Hughes, based in Hoboken, New Jersey, and we prepared the redevelopment plan. That is before the board this evening. Nice to see everyone. So what I'd like to do is just provide a summary of the overall redevelopment plan as drafted. Ira's then gonna provide you with a presentation on some conceptual massing that basically illustrates the requirements of the plan and talk a little bit about the design standards as well. But I'd like to start by just orienting the board to the site, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, but it's a roughly 8.2-acre property, which is bounded by Bloomfield Avenue to the south, Glen Ridge Avenue to the north, Lackawanna Plaza to the west, and it is bisected by Grove Street. So in this plan, we refer to the track that is to the west of Grove Street as the west parcel or the west side, and then to the east of Grove Street as the east parcel or the east side. The west parcel, of course, has been developed historically with the lock, the former Lackawanna train station and related improvements. It is now mostly vacant. There are several historic features on this site, which we'll be referring to in the course of the presentation and are described in the redevelopment plan itself. And then on the east side, which is connected via a pedestrian underpass under Grove Street, is at this point mostly vacant surface parking lots, along with the existing TD Bank along the Bloomfield Avenue frontage. And specifically, we're talking about Block 3213, Lot 2, which is the west parcel, and Block 4202, Lots 4.01 and 4.02, which is the east parcel. The top, topographical characteristics of this property become very significant when we start thinking about the future redevelopment of this site. This exhibit, which is included in the redevelopment plan on page nine as figure four, provides an illustration of the existing topography of the site. We describe it in the plan as a bowl-shaped property, and that is because from certain vantage points surrounding the perimeter of the site, there's a change in grade from anywhere 10 to 12 feet from sort of the perimeter to the central portion of the site. So for example, if you take a look at the corner of Lackawanna Plaza and Bloomfield Avenue where the elevation is roughly 246 feet, well, that's about 10 feet taller than, or higher than the point of the pedestrian underpass, which is about 236 feet, as you can see along Grove Street. Likewise, Grove Street itself is roughly 10 feet taller than the grade of the west parcel near the pedestrian underpass. So basically, this does provide an opportunity, or at least a consideration, when dealing with the mass of potential buildings on the site and how the impacts of mass and building height can be mitigated through design. The current zoning of this property is C1, which has two sub-districts. So the west parcel is located within the CB center area, and the east parcel is in the CB community area. And the existing zoning generally allows for a mix of uses consistent with the downtown commercial context, with a maximum building height up to 67 feet and six stories and a maximum density of 55 units per acre. There's a very extensive discussion in the redevelopment plan itself. It's from pages 10 to 14 on the relationship of the redevelopment plan to the master plan, which is of course very much the focus of the, of the board's evaluation here. In this presentation, I've just pulled out a few highlights, but I would encourage you all to read that portion of the plan. The most recent master plan amendment, the Unified Land Use Plan and Circulation Element, places this property within the Montclair Center Downtown C2 classification, which recommended a maximum height of four stories and 47 feet. It also promotes the use of form-based code, which this redevelopment plan is certainly an example of, to concentrate density in appropriate nodes along Bloomfield Avenue, and then reduce allowable uses and densities in one approach's adjacent neighborhoods. It also introduces the concept of a density bonus or density bonuses as a tool to ensure that development greater than what's currently permitted or recommended in the master plan is associated to public improvements. And in the master plan, examples include sidewalk, pedestrian infrastructure, bicycle infrastructure, and public open space. And I think you'll see as part of this redevelopment plan, a number of those public benefits, public purposes are advanced. In terms of affordable housing, the master plan also calls for a goal of, a set aside of 20% of all dwelling units in projects with five or more units to be set aside as affordable. And it also does reference the concept of including workforce housing as part of an affordable housing set aside in future redevelopment projects. And as I'll explain later, this plan certainly achieves both of those objectives of the master plan. And then finally, the master plan has an extensive list of guidance for redevelopment plans specifically. So I'm not going to read each of these. Again, these are recited within the redevelopment plan itself, but there is some reference to encouraging, for example, buildings that front on a street, a real emphasis on the pedestrian environment, ensuring high-quality pedestrian amenities are provided, encouraging public realm and private development that maintains the scale and character inherent in the diverse and historic neighborhoods of the township. And then we get into the redevelopment plan itself. And again, I'm not going to read each and every goal and objective because it's, it's two and a half full pages of various goals and objectives for this site that the township has set forth for this redevelopment plan. They're broken down into overall goals, land use goals, design goals, mobility and circulation goals, and then finally sustainability goals. But I think if you take a close look at these, they're all concepts that tie into both the master plan and, and just sound planning principles that really guide the overall land use and building standards that are employed in this redevelopment plan. I think a number of these also are repeated from the first go-around on the Lackawanna, the first go-around being several years ago when a redevelopment was, redevelopment plan was drafted. Many of those objectives and planning principles have been continued as part of this introduced version of the So now we get into really the meat of the redevelopment plan itself, and we prepared this exhibit, which is figure five in the redevelopment plan. It's called a regulating plan, and this is really a visual representation of the land use and building requirements of the redevelopment plan itself, and I think also provides an illustrative or conceptual depiction of the anticipated layout of the overall project. So what you'll see here is the west parcel being on the left side of the page. It broken down into three buildings. So we have Building A, Building B, and Building C. That's how they're referred to in the redevelopment plan itself. And then on the east parcel, Buildings D and E. What this diagram is showing you is required buildings, open spaces, and frontage types. So the orange or red shaded areas are for ground floor active use. So those are building frontages where active uses are specifically required. And then the blue hatched area is for an anticipated art gallery wrap, which I'll describe a bit later. There's also certain areas that are required to be arcades, and then other areas where it's not feasible to have active uses, art galleries or arcades, architectural screening. There's also three signature open spaces required as part of this redevelopment plan. So on the west parcel, you'll see the main plaza, the station plaza, and then on the east side is the linear arts plaza. And through some of the, the arrows that are shown on here, this plan also just illustrates the anticipated pedestrian building entries to the various buildings, pedestrian connections, and vehicular access. And I think you'll see that the pedestrian connectivity of the site is something that was of paramount importance to everyone involved in putting together this redevelopment plan, and also to, to be very sensitive in terms of where vehicular circulation was allowed, access points, drop-off points, et cetera.
Janice, can we ask a question? As a matter of protocol, are we holding our questions until the end, or shall, if we have a question about this exhibit? Let's, let's hold, I'll let them, that's a better. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the redevelopment plan on page 21 is the list of permitted uses in the plan. It's intended to be fairly flexible, all-encompassing in terms of creating a mixed-use environment, very consistent with the zoning of the downtown. In terms of anticipated uses by building, and here again, we're referring back to the buildings as labeled on the regulating plan, and I think we have a, a board exhibit of it over on the left side of the room. Building A is anticipated, anticipated to be office and a grocery store component. Building B, residential retail. Building C, office and retail. The historic station waiting room, which is required to be adaptively reused, is anticipated to be an event exhibition space and lobby for the Building A office component. And then on the east side, both buildings are anticipated to be residential and retail mixed-use buildings. Affordable housing, consistent with the master plan, there is a requirement to set aside 20% of the units for low and moderate income households. In addition, 10% of the residential component is required to be set aside as workforce housing, which is defined here as being affordable to households in between 80% and 120% of area median income. There is also, in order to achieve the mixed-use concept for the overall redevelopment area, there's a minimum non-residential gross floor area requirement for each building. So in Building A, remember, would include both an office and grocery component, a minimum of 90,000 square feet of non-residential floor area in Building A. Building B, 18,000 square feet. Building C, 15,000 square feet. The retail within Buildings D and E would have to be a minimum of 12,000 square feet. And also on top of that is, a minimum of 75,000 square feet of office space shall be provided within what's required for Buildings A, B, and C in terms of non-residential floor area. This exhibit that's on the screen now is included in the redevelopment plan on page 27 as figure six. So this is where we really get into what we referenced earlier, sort of the, the form-based treatment of the regulations in the plan. So for each building here, we have a very detailed set of requirements in terms of minimum setbacks, step backs, and also just overall maximum height. So just to clarify the terminology, setbacks are the minimum required distance between the property line and the building. And in blue in each of the keys here, you'll see that that's referencing the required setback. So for certain buildings, there's a setback that applies to, to the first four stories of the building. In other cases, it's simply just the first, the, the first story of the building. The red labels in these keys reference upper-story step backs, and that is the distance from the, the front facade of that story to the lower portion of the building. And so in certain cases, the step back for the fifth story is required to be 20 feet back or separated setback from the stories below. And then you also see that there's a maximum height requirement, which is articulated in terms of the number of stories allowed, as well as height from finished grade along each of those frontages. In terms of parking requirements, the plan has required 1.1 spaces per unit for the multifamily residential, one space per 250 square feet of gross floor area for the supermarket grocery store office, and that also includes medical office, and then all other permitted uses are required to provide a minimum of three spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. And those are the minimums for those uses, and then the plan also requires a shared parking approach to ensure that the parking that's being provided within the redevelopment plan is, is utilized in the most efficient manner possible. And that's something that would be submitted to the planning board as part of site plan review. There's also an extensive discussion of historic resources, and I'm sure we'll continue that discussion with the Historic Preservation Commission. This is on pages 35 and 36 of the redevelopment plan. But to summarize, and, you know, perhaps Ira can weigh in on this as well, if there's any questions. He's really taken the lead on some of the historic preservation components. The plan essentially calls for the preservation and reuse of a number of historic features on the property. Those are all listed here on the screen. I think it's really all of the signature environmental features of the site, and there's some discussion in the plan about potential creative adaptive reuse strategies for some of those, for example, the stanchions. And then finally, with respect to sustainability, just in terms of green building requirements, all of the buildings in the redevelopment area are required to demonstrate an ability, an ability to achieve LEED certification. Based on discussions with the property owner, there's also a desire to pursue what's called living building challenge certification for Building C. So the plan strongly encourages the pursuit of that goal, which is really a very, very high level of, of green building sustainability certification. And then, of course, there's guidelines or encouragement with respect to incorporating green infrastructure in the site, including permeable paver systems, and also landscaping features such as bioswells and rain gardens. And then also planting should be selected for their ability to reduce irrigation needs, support native species, and create cool shady microclimates within the site. In terms of public right-of-way improvements, there's, surrounding the entire perimeter of the site, requirements for new widened public sidewalks. A bus shelter shall be provided on the west parcel adjacent to Bloomfield Avenue, and a bike lane will be improved within the Glen Ridge Avenue portion of the, the right-of-way adjacent to the site, which is tied into the Essex Hudson Greenway to Bloomfield Avenue. There's also some guidance in the plan or specifically requirements with respect to signage that are specific to the site. So just to summarize, there's two monument signs that are permitted, as well as a project identification sign, which is anticipated to be near the main plaza along Bloomfield Avenue. Avenue. Maximum area per facade of all signs devoted to a single tenant shall not exceed 3.75 square feet per linear foot of street or public plaza frontage, or 150 square feet, whichever is less. There's a number of requirements just with respect to the signage that's permitted for the grocer tenant specifically. So one wall sign is permitted on each frontage. No permitted wall sign shall exceed four feet in height. And the top of the sign shall not extend above greater height greater than 40 feet. In terms of illumination, the sign may be haloed or externally illuminated. However, the plan also permits exposed neon illumination for that specific grocer sign. And then projecting signage is also allowed by the plan, sort of a blade-type signage. Finally, of course, this is a redevelopment plan. We're talking about the zoning parameters guiding the site. At some point, if the plan is adopted, the actual project will come before the board in the form of a site plan application. And as you'll see in the redevelopment plan, and it's repeated here on your screen, the plan has a pretty robust application requirement for that site plan submission. This is just an example or excerpts of what's being requested as part of that site plan application. Phasing plan, construction staging plan, traffic study, parking management, support for the LEED certification requirements, a fiscal impact analysis, utility impact analysis, a stormwater management plan, an affordable housing plan, among other elements. So with that, Janice, that would include my portion of the presentation. I think Ira is ready to present the conceptual depictions.
I don't know if you want to ask questions of Keenan now or at the end.
Do you have a question? Was it answered?
No, I have actually a number of questions. It might be better if you listen to Ira first. I think so.
Okay.
Let's see if we can find your. Yeah, I think they're up here. Thanks.
Do you see it, Ira?
I do, thank you.
Hey, Art. Jacob just reminded me that nobody's been sworn in. Do they have to be?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the planning board. It's good to see you. I'm accustomed to presenting when I'm right in front of the screen, so let's see how this goes. I might pick up the mic and go mobile. I hope you'll understand. I think since the last time I was here, I've also gotten the, we don't call them bifocals anymore, transitionals or something, so reading this is a little challenging. Thank you, sir. So I will. I want to thank Keenan, and I want to use this opportunity to not just share imagery that some of you, I think, saw on November 29 at Hillside, but to really use the opportunity to talk about how the design standards that are part of the redevelopment plan dovetail with the plan as a whole, and how they relate to specific pieces of the concept plan that you've heard about or have seen or read about in the redevelopment plan. So I'll be going back and forth a little bit between illustrative imagery and how the design standards work, because they are, I think, instrumental in how, well, not just how the redeveloper will proceed, but how they've been used to date based on an earlier draft of this plan from 2017, which included a lot of the same principles in terms of design standards. As Keenan mentioned, this is over an eight-acre site. That's huge. That's a big site. It's not just one or two buildings, three buildings, four buildings, or even five buildings. We're really operating more at the scale of a neighborhood. That's not to intimidate you and the charge you have, because I'm not sure if the master plan talks about what a new neighborhood in the community should consist of. I think there are principles there that talk about livability, walkability, mixed use, and so on, continuity with the main street. But the task in front of all of us is really to answer the question of how do you create a new neighborhood? And in a neighborhood in a very unusual place, this is for over 100 years, been really dominated by the train station and a mix of development around it. So the main street that we like to think of or talk about doesn't really exist to the east of the site. You've got the Montclair Muse, which is essentially almost a suburban or even ex-urban development, townhouse construction with a parking lot on our main street. You have a TD Bank, again, a very suburban concept with a drive-through. And then we could go around the whole perimeter of the site, a mix of single-family homes here, accessible or accessory garage there. At the corner of Grove and Glen Ridge, northeast corner, you've, of course, got a multifamily dwelling, funeral home, post office. This is an atypical mix. And this site on both sides of Grove Street has to meet it somehow in a meaningful way. The design standards make an attempt to provide a framework that guides the design team to figure this out. It builds on the principles that have been discussed in the community for many years, since at least 2014, as Director Tally mentioned. And the design standards are broken into three parts, as they were for the Seymour Street Redevelopment Plan, as well as the Haynes Redevelopment Plan, the project planning board saw not too long ago. So we're building here on both of those redevelopment plans, and we're customizing it for the Lackawanna site. Customized is the key word, because we're addressing historic preservation. Neither the Seymour Street Plan nor the Haynes Redevelopment Plan had historic elements in the middle of the site. At the edge, yes, but not in the middle of the site. And actually, not just in the middle of the site, but kind of throughout the site, mostly on the west, but visibility from the east to the west to some of these historic elements. So that's a new twist. I'll show you how this redevelopment plan attempts to, design standards attempt to engage with that issue. And then, as I mentioned, all of this ties back to the site plan submission requirements, the list that Keenan presented toward the end. You'll see another image of it here, a different section. It's on page 95. A lot of bullets, a lot of requirements, because, as I mentioned, you're not really talking about just one or two buildings. We're trying to help the board down the line with the site plan have as many tools as possible to visualize and interpret what that site plan application is telling us. The rules, tools, direction are based on the idea that first, the design standards give us rules about the walkable community. And look at really great examples from around the country and some from Europe as well. The tools section of the design standards are particular to Montclair as a main street community. It focuses on the town center. It uses the examples of specific buildings and places in the town center that have been lauded or considered successful. And then the third section of the design standards called direction, look at specific parts of the Lackawanna site, but also talk about the Lackawanna site as a whole. So for the design team, you get a sense of what are the overarching principles? That's the rules. You get a sense of the DNA we'd like you to draw from. That's the town center itself. And then you get the direction, your inclinations based on comments from the planning board, Historic Preservation Commission, and others, to lead the developer, redeveloper, to the appropriate solutions. On the left is an example of rules. So we talk about character of place. It can be very difficult to talk about character. Some people might say that that's purely subjective. I actually believe that we kind of know when we go to a place that feels wrong, ill proportioned, scary, unfriendly. And there are other conditions that lead us to a place, a destination, that we feel is actually inviting, interesting, friendly. So rules, the rules section is really developed to help us understand why is it that some places feel better than others, and provide examples to the redeveloper for that purpose to lead them in a better path. On the right are tools. These are atypical photographs, because if you live in town or work in town, you see these spaces and may not think of them very much. But one of my favorite images is the, on the right side of this image, top left, you're looking at the Claridge Apartments. It's a sheer, six-story tall structure, no stepping back of the form. You hardly know it's there. I could go into depth about why you don't even think about that's a six-story building, even though it's right on Church Street, one of our most intimate streets. Happy to explain that phenomenon and why a six-story building can actually pull that off and be a welcome environment, a welcome place for people. But just to the right of the Claridge in that photograph is the Hink Building, which is an example of a building with a step back. Most of us don't even know that. It has on top the old ceiling for the giant movie theater that was there. It steps back on all sides. So unless you're in the Crescent parking deck, as I was when I took that photograph, you wouldn't know that the town center actually has a very large-scale mid-rise structure. And then down below, a couple more examples. And this continues for several pages, for those of you who've gotten there, in the very fine reading, I must say, describing other buildings, how they work, how they use architectural treatments, penetration or window composition in order to make themselves more inviting and break down their scale. The direction section of the guidelines is extremely important. A new section within the directions, the third part of the design standards speaks specifically to a project statement and compatibility. So I urge you to pay close attention to this section of the design standards. It's section four, C.4. It really contemplates what does it mean to have a new neighborhood? And it offers three examples of what a new neighborhood could be. And in, can't read it from here, but in the document, I know the very first one, for example, talks about the way in which this is a key, as Janice mentioned, crossroads, almost the geographic center of the township. It could be conceived of and defined of as a place that you orient to, whether you're a visitor or a resident, a kind of marker, if you will, the center of the center. And conceptually, to get there, you have to almost ask yourself, well, what would the architecture for a place like that be to make it that when people find themselves there, they kind of know? If I go north, I'm heading north. You know, if I go up Grove, I'm heading to the rest of town. If I head south, I'm heading to the rest of town in that direction. It becomes something that, I think, really serves the scale of the site. There's an opportunity to make a mark there and almost redefine the center of gravity of the town center. In contrast, you could say, well, maybe what's really needed is something that's more of an infill neighborhood that's not trying to stand out, and it's quieter, and you walk into the space of these buildings and discover the train station, and it's really about that one special moment. These things are not easy to resolve because of the nature of the site that we've got. But it asks, it really requires, as part of the site plan submission requirements, it requires the redeveloper to come to you in the site plan with a strong statement about what this place is in terms of town planning. It's not adequate, I think, just to have five good buildings. What we're asking for is, in my discipline, we call it a town planning intent. You're really talking about shaping a neighborhood that's meaningful within itself and how it relates to the community around it. And that also, obviously, will then impact the architectural design itself, whether all buildings are sort of alike in their height and perhaps materiality, or whether one is more important than the others, or maybe they're all very different from each other. It relates, it ties back to this idea of what does this place mean to itself and the rest of the town. And then we come to imagery. I'll show you, we're going to focus now more on walking into the project. I used this image on the 29th to talk about the ways in which you can begin to visualize three dimensionally how these setbacks from the sidewalk work, and then as the buildings rise, they step back so that the overall mass of each building is reduced. In general, the buildings will read as four stories from a pedestrian's perspective because of this phenomenon of the stepping back. I can come back to this image, because I think there may be more questions about it, but it's a helpful image to begin to understand how the buildings, every building, has really been kind of carved away to meter itself and step down to the context. This was a product of an analysis that included what we call the sky exposure plane. These are a little hard to see, but the diagrams on the left actually use the line of sight for people down on the street, and you gauge at what point the stories above the fourth story, when they're stepped back, begin to come visible. This phenomenon varies depending on how wide a street is and so on. And you can see the red lines on the drawing on the right indicate where these three studies on the left were taken. This is another pair of studies. There's several more of these that were used to understand how buildings that are pre-existing, in this case on the upper left, the building on the left meets the building on the right. It would obviously be a very different experience if the building on the right, which is one of the proposed buildings, was a sheer building face without step backs. So this is an instrumental tool in helping create the sense from the street level that the buildings are not overwhelming. Talking about buildings a lot, one of the things that I think has been championed since the Seymour Street project was the idea that public space should be provided. And one of the things that we've worked on a lot, and I know the redeveloper paid close attention to, was balancing the mass against the opportunity to use those masses to define effective public spaces. Not public spaces that were left over, but public spaces that could be defined as outdoor rooms, and as this diagram shows, how they might link to each other. I'm going to use this opportunity to go to the screen for a quick second.
Press and hold the button.
Press and hold this one?
Press and hold.
I don't think it was that one. Oh.
Light went on?
How's that?
That's it?
So you're looking at a circulation diagram, and this circulation is showing both vehicular circulation as well as pedestrian circulation. So I want you to notice, obviously, we have Bloomfield Avenue. We've got Glen Ridge. And we've got Grove. All the rest of these blue lines that you see are defining pedestrian paths through the site, and they're intended to get people to where they want to go as easily and efficiently as possible. You can also see in a diagram like this how buildings have been pushed far away from the street. Keenan mentioned this. We have very deep setbacks from property lines. On the east side, it manifests itself as a very wide linear park. I'll come back to that with a 3D view at the end of the presentation. The underpass will remain intact, so people can circulate from the east side to the west side, from the linear park to the station plaza, and through to the main plaza itself. This diagram is a product of not just the two architectural teams the redevelopers working with, but an excellent local landscape architecture firm. And the intention, as I said, is to dovetail landscape with buildings so that they kind of work with each other. And I think that comes through in the 3D views, the ground-level views that we'll be seeing. Yeah, thanks, Keenan. I'm showing you this view because a lot of people have been curious about visibility. I take it very seriously. One of the things we've done in this redevelopment plan is to include 10 photographs of the site as it is today. Can you go to the next slide, Keenan? Thank you.
Ira, excuse me. Can you stand back a little bit?
Oh, sorry.
You're kind of blocking the view from the side.
I'm sorry.
Or Ira, if you don't mind going on the other side.
Yeah, well, this works, and I'll be more mindful of that. I'm sorry about that. You're looking at two more pages from the redevelopment plan, from the design standards. So these are images three and four, the second page, of photos showing existing conditions. The redevelopers required to photo collage their design into these images so that we know we're going to get, in addition to the models, which I'm not sure all of you are aware, we have a pair of models today, we can get ground-level views of some key places in the proposed design at the time of site plan submission. And these are, so here's that screenshot of the bullets from the site plan submission requirements, and these two happen to fall under that. It talks about how there's 10 of these images. So let's go back one, please. This is a preliminary image. The architectural style is a placekeeper. We asked the redevelop- We asked the redeveloper to create a few of these for us now so we could begin to understand how the massing really will relate to the setting. We can see the waiting room here. You can see some of that arcade-like treatment on the base of that building there, but more importantly, you have a sense of how the step-backs work in order to relieve the pressure of the building seeming overwhelming. So this is one of 10 images that'll ultimately be submitted. Go ahead, Keenan, thank you. Yep, great. This has been conversation about one of the signature spaces, the main plaza that fronts on Bloomfield Avenue, and what is it really? Again, we have to keep in mind that the redevelopment plan talks in terms of concepts and principles and activity and intent. So the main plaza is surely meant to be a public destination, but a shared space. This is one of those subjects we could return to and talk about at length in terms of what makes for an active space, one that's entirely devoted to pedestrians, pedestrians doing one, one thing, maybe two things, three things. There's another school of thought about activation, inviting bicyclists in, or in this case, utility road, which is really more of a drop-off lane, that's how I think of it, and this space being much more of a public plaza. At the 29th, someone asked about the size of this space, and I have a photograph of an actual space that's sort of similar that's coming up, but it's approximately 170 by 230. Next slide. And what the plan talks about, and the redeveloper has expressed strong interest in, is not just day-to-day use of that inner space, but really conceiving of the space as having usefulness by closing down the roadway and allowing events to happen, whether it's food festivals or other organized events by perhaps public and private entities who are interested in using this space. Next. And then you can imagine other uses, music festivals. It may be possible, depending on the ultimate contouring of the middle section, to set up an ice rink in the winter. So I know that there are people who wonder, well, how can you combine a road with people? How does that work? It's, it's done, and it's more commonly seen in Europe. I'm going to show you three examples, two are in the United States. It's more commonly done in Europe because of the infrastructure there and roadways being made for carts instead of cars, and people having a sense of hardscape being a place that you can go to and hang out, and it's okay. So this one's in Wales, and the delineation of where vehicles or bicycles might go is handled with changes in paving. And judicious placement of benches and trees and quality architecture rounds, it does create the sense of, well, this is a kind of interesting environment. It's neither for, just for the car nor just for the pedestrian. There's activity all day long. Here in Knoxville, similar kind of conditional, this one, this one happens to be a very long space, but you can see how it's very useful in terms of broadening possible uses to have vehicles come that are able to load in stores, but also drop off goods that might be used on a farmer's market day. Next. And here we are in Pittsburgh, Market Square in Pittsburgh. And in terms of scale, the space I just showed you is about two-thirds the size of this. About two-thirds the size of this space. And again, you can see the ring road or lane. Part of the excitement of a space like this is its flexibility and its accessibility for all kinds of uses, whether it's, as I say, walking, biking, car, et cetera. Next. All right, we're going to start dropping down into the project now. We're looking at the main plaza. Here's the waiting room. And people have asked about this image. Boy, it really looks, it doesn't look like one large space. I would say this is really a product of this imagery not distinguishing super well between the different paving materials and also changes in level. The idea, in my mind, and what the illustrations and the design standards show, is that, as in examples I showed you, you're really handling the definition of certain zones with a flush surface. Next. So now, we're actually down in that space, but we're in the northeast corner. Can we go back one second? So we're now standing here between the supermarket and building C. We're standing here looking to the north. Thanks. We're about to go into Station Plaza. We're still kind of in that corner of the main plaza. And now we're starting to see the historic elements up close. So these are the original steel stanchions on the same meter that we know them today, except we've removed the nonhistoric elements. A question came up about, well, is this how they would really be finished? That's, that's also TBD, to be determined. The historic elements themselves do need a certain level of protection from the elements. This is one conceptual version where you restore the concrete wings to recreate the sheltering effect that you had on the canopy. That's the railcar you've probably heard about that's restored, which really recreates the sense of what this place felt like when it was in operation. And then in the distance, you can see the rest of the stanchions defining this place called Station Plaza. The individuals standing there give you a sense of scale, even though it looks like it's small, well, that's only because it's compared to the main plaza, but it's still a very generous space.
Ira, what is the, what are the dimensions of Station?
I need to-
You knew I'd ask that.
I didn't know you'd ask, but as I was speaking, I thought someone's going to ask, and I will not have the numbers, but I will, by the end of tonight, I can get them for you. We're bouncing back to the design standards now. One of the things we learned from the last time this project was before the planning board, and I think it was out, it was out at that point, out of the redevelopment consideration, but there was a conversation about, well, developer, redeveloper, how are you going to handle the treatment of historic elements, not just where they ultimately land, but protecting them? And so we've included, based on the U.S. Secretary of Standards, treatment for historic elements, a lot of language about caretaking the historic elements, preserving them in place, keeping them safe from flood, fire, vandalism, et cetera, until such time as they're ready to be adaptively reused. There are other statements in this section having to do with the historic elements that are, that are similarly inclined, leading the redeveloper to reuse rather than loss or demolition. Next slide. So we're coming to our last few slides now, and we're on Grove Street. And one of the things the plan talks about, Keenan mentioned it, is rehabilitating the stair that takes you down from Grove to the station platforms. There used to be two, and there are remnants of the southernmost one still in place. And so one of those circulation paths I showed you takes you over Grove and allows you to go down to the supermarket, for example, or down into Station Plaza, or down and into the main plaza. But it also gives us a view of the waiting room, which it's sort of visible today, but you really have to stand in a particular place and strain a little bit. But for me, I think I've said this before, this is one of the most exciting images because of the way through the relocate, not relocation, but the restoration or reappearance, let's say, the reappearance of the stanchions plus the waiting room really helps you appreciate and the stair, how this place used to function, the kind of industrial transportation machinery that was, you know, that characterized this place. We're also on Grove, a little bit elevated here, looking, getting a different angle on Station Plaza, a different treatment, potential treatment, which isn't quite as successful for the steel stanchions where you could grow vines, have flowering plants, for example, but it becomes trickier when you're thinking about how to really protect the steel from weathering. The redevelopers are aware of this, and the plan has language about the importance of not just protecting the historic elements before they're moved, but also making sure that the decisions made protect the elements in place. Right here, sort of distorted, is the horse-watering trough. So it's, it's still on the eastern edge of the site, but it's been moved north to help frame and provide sight and sound to the Station Plaza. And then at the northern edge of Station Plaza, where you see these people walking, that leads you right to the underpass. Next slide. And here we have come through to the east side. So the berm is still there, but it's carved away. We've removed the dome that sits on the east side and the storefront, so this is all exterior space now. And of course, on the west side, you've seen the enclosure has gone on that side, so your experience of being in the underpass will be much less daunting. It'll be, you know, lit and, and air will be flowing from side to side. And it brings you to the east side in this linear park. I forgot to mention this on the 29th, and I regret that. It's actually conceived of as a linear arts park because this is a 10-foot-deep zone which has been set aside for the installation of temporary art, curated art. So you've got art happening here. You might have noticed a mural on the west side of Station Plaza, and there are other spaces that have kind of been set aside in the plan for art makers or makers. We can talk about that if you're curious. But I think this image, which I believe is my last image, helps you understand that this diagram about circulation really expresses itself in a variety of ways for universal access, whether you're in a wheelchair or a walker, or you're just a kid running ahead of your parents or in the distance. There's a, the way the spaces have been shaped, an exterior area really sets up well for possible restaurant use on the corner where this building meets Glen Ridge. Next slide. I give you my thanks. All right.
Should I start? Well, I have lots of questions, and I, this is really from my point of view, just fact-finding to enhance our understanding of the plan. Can you go to, I guess it would be Keenan, page 19 of the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just from my understanding, I am, you have a little outline of what each of the different illustrations means, but I don't know what the small little gray area under A, B, and C, is that illustrating a parking lot, or what, what is that? The little gray kind of hatch thing? You have the dots that are in squares, right?
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the dots in the squares, that's the-
That's explained.
Private, shared, open space. I think what you're seeing there is simply just the roof, a roof view of the anticipated buildings.
A roof view. So does that mean what's not that grayish thing are step-backs? I don't get it.
Are you referring to this area?
Yes, those squares, yeah, they're in a couple of the buildings, yeah.
Yeah, that's simply just the roof could be depicting a solar installation or mechanicals. It's just a review of the buildings.
So it has no particular meaning, it's just-
No, no.
Okay. So another question, you have the vehicular access and you have pedestrian access to buildings, yellow being pedestrian, the red being vehicular, right?
Correct.
How does someone drive their car into building C?
There's no parking anticipated for building C.
There's no parking, that's a seven-story building, and there's no parking? Where are people who, that's an office building and retail. Where are people parking for that?
It's a five-story building.
It's 75 feet, so-
I can, I can address this.
Yeah, where do people park?
So there's no requirement that building C or any of the other buildings have to have parking on-site. They're, based on the conceptual plans that we've reviewed, there is no parking within building C itself. It would be parked in other parking structures, perhaps in building A.
Keenan, they do have, they do have to have parking on-site, just not in the building.
That's, that's what I said, yes.
It's going to be a parking debt, a, a, parking somewhere on that side of the property, but maybe not right in that building.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, that's what I was saying is-
It's shared parking.
Okay. We talked about shared parking as possibly not being applicable now since people seem to not go into the office, but anyway, just let me finish my question.
The plan calls for shared parking.
Okay, yes, but maybe that would be a revision that we'd have in the plan as we look at this because it doesn't seem to make sense.
And we have Jerry, Jerry Giosa here to talk about parking.
So is it fair to say that parking hasn't been designated exactly for that building yet?
Not for that building, however, because it is a standalone building that has visibility on all four sides. I mean, from a planning perspective, it's maybe not an ideal location for parking because of the vehicular access, loading, and, and all of those operations that would be associated with it. If you could accommodate parking nearby, that would probably be more beneficial from a planning perspective.
And the parking on that side of the property to the west of Grove Street is located where? Right now, according to the plan so far?
Well, based on, as I said, based on the conceptual plans that I reviewed, there's parking accommodated within buildings A and B.
Okay, so-
So that's where, so that's where building C is going to park?
I just, are you not sharing the parking from D and E? It seems like it would be more efficient to share the entire site rather than just have, I just wanted to be, so are you saying that everything on one side of Grove will be parked on one side and everything on the other will be parked there? I-
That's what it sounded like.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if we could have clarity on that.
Well, to be clear, the plan does not require it to be on one side or the other. I mean, it requires there's a minimum parking requirement by use, and then, of course, the shared parking plan. So that would be provided to the board as part of the site plan.
Okay, so by that-
There's nothing in the plan that would preclude parking.
So we should assume that parking for C can be anywhere in A, B, C, A, B, E, or D, that's all?
Sure.
All right, cool. Thanks.
I have a question.
No, 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 no.
That's all right.
Okay.
Since we're mentioning that, my understanding is that building A is where the supermarket will be, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we want a viable supermarket, presumably. And in most cases, the main street, which is Bloomfield Avenue, right? If one is wanting to shop at the supermarket, is there any way to get to the supermarket by car to, to the parking area via Bloomfield Avenue to get into the parking deck? Can you explain how the access to parking for a supermarket, which is generally not done by shopping at a supermarket, is generally not done by bicycle or walking if you want to buy a lot in a viable supermarket? So is there a way for people who are going from the main corridor will have an access to go shop at that particular supermarket via Bloomfield Avenue?
Yes, based on the plan that's on the screen, the vehicular access to buildings A and B is anticipated to be provided from Lacoona Plaza and also Glen Ridge Avenue.
Well, that's not the main street. The main corridor is Bloomfield Avenue. I think of the viability of obvious supermarkets that I have seen thriving. For example, if you want to get to the Whole Foods, you go into Bloomfield Avenue. If you want to get to the Kings, you go into Valley Road. The main access is generally from the main corridor. So if you want the supermarket to survive, is, is the, is the person who is driving down Bloomfield Avenue from north to Verona or whatever able to shop at that store because it's conveniently accessed from the main road?
Yes, it's accessed right off of Bloomfield Avenue via Lacoona Plaza. And I think in evaluating the plans and developing this redevelopment plan and knowing that there's a real emphasis on the public realm and creating these signature open spaces, there's a real opportunity to do, rather than a surface parking lot along the frontage of the property, this main plaza, which Ira described. So we're trying to balance the objectives here.
I'm not asking for the main area to be the parking lot. All I'm saying is that the access, you're saying you have to turn onto Lacoona Plaza and go in from a different way, that the person who is, is not going to see where he's going to park and will just keep driving down Bloomfield Avenue, unless they happen to be a local person who knows that they can go through a different way.
I, you know, that may be a question you can ask in the context of site plan review, but the redevelopment plan as drafted, as I said, does not provide access to parking directly from Bloomfield Avenue.
May I add something there? On page 40 of the redevelopment plan, it talks about signage and it calls for a 50 by 15-feet-high project identification sign. And I was wondering, what is that? And where is that going to be on this site? That's a big sign. Unless it's a typo. 15-feet-high by 50-feet-long, right? On page 40, it's a product, project identification sign.
Well, actually, what it says is that the sign area shall be 50 feet. So the entire area of the sign is 50 feet. And the maximum height of the sign shall be 15 feet. And it also says that that sign may be located along the Bloomfield Avenue frontage or within the main plaza. So this is intended to be really an overall sort of iconic project identification sign to identify this new neighborhood.
Are you telling me that I'm reading this incorrectly?
Yes.
Like what is the, yeah, okay, well, what is the, what is this? Where is the project identification sign, which might answer Carol's question? And how big is it?
Right.
Well, I think I just answered your question. It's 50 feet in area.
50 square feet.
50 square feet in area.
Okay, because it doesn't say 50 square feet, does it?
Correct, it should say square feet, so we don't have this issue later on.
So that's what I asked, was it a typo or is that the sign you're calling for?
Yes.
It should be square feet.
Okay, thank you. Because I'm thinking it's 50 feet long, 15 feet high.
So you didn't read it wrong. It was just incorrectly printed in there.
Thank you.
Right, and I would not want to see somebody come in with a site plan that says, well, no, I looked at it, it's a 50 feet, it's 50, you know, it's 48 feet for some reason.
Okay. Just to continue on building C, which-
Can I, can I actually just, just on the, because I think Ms. Willis brought up an interesting point, wayfinding, right? How do, how do we allow for signage that allows for wayfinding? Because we're finding this with, what is it, Summit Medical on Seymour Street, right? The address of Summit Medical is 1 Seymour Street. So we heard an application for a sign where everybody's coming down that little stub of Seymour Street, not finding parking, not knowing to go into the deck behind there off of South Fullerton. How do we allow for that or try to push them in that direction that wayfinding is critical? And with Ms. Willis saying the supermarket probably will have an address of Bloomfield Avenue, but you can't get to the parking from Bloomfield Avenue, we're going to have another disconnect, I fear.
So on page 43, there's a section called Directory and Wayfinding Signage. And it says, "A wayfinding signage program shall be required to direct pedestrians to and from nearby parking facilities in Montclair Center destinations as well as throughout the site."
Well, we don't know what that'll look like at this point.
Well, that would be subject to the board's review during site plan approval.
We won't know. We don't know what that will look like at this point.
Correct, yes, yes.
I mean, I think in some ways it's potentially worse than that. I mean, so, I mean, look, we, we've known going into this that there was going to be a supermarket as part of this redevelopment because that was in the council's original conception of it. But to a degree, we're proposing to suspend the laws of economics because we, you know, there was a supermarket and there wasn't a supermarket. And so what we're now trying to do is to develop a site that will not just be sufficient to attract a supermarket, but as Willis said, we want it to be sustainable. So, you know, we, I'm very cognizant of the stage we're at and the stage we're not at. And I know that there will be a site plan approval later, but the problem is there's a little bit of a sequential issue here because in an ideal world, we would know who the supermarket developer is. That person would be part of this and would be able, not just to answer Ms. Willis's questions, but will have been thinking through Ms. Willis's questions because the supermarket purveyor will be more knowledgeable about this than any of us about how to work this. And so the question is, if we end, I'm 15 seconds away and then I know you, I know you got an answer.
Take 20.
But, but, you know, if we, if we end up in a situation where, where for this purpose we're approving this plan with the idea of a supermarket going there, knowing that there'll be site plan approval later, what are we locking ourselves into here that may be difficult when the supermarket purveyor comes along to say, well, wait a minute, I'd like to be X, done?
And just to add to that, I mean, the last time we looked at this site for a supermarket, we heard all this testimony about how the supermarket has to be seen and how, you know, what attracts people going in. We can't just ignore all that that we've heard before. And this looks like it's buried.
Exactly.
And where is the sign that people are going to see on Bloomfield Avenue coming south, going east, rather, going west on Grove Street to say, oh, there's this supermarket here? Or is it going to be like the food town in Bloomfield that unless you know it's there, you won't know that it's there, basically? And unless you know, and if you don't know that it's there, you're not going to know where to park. And if you don't see any place on the street, you're going to go on and you don't know that you can go into the parking garage and, you know, all that other stuff, so. I mean, I think we really need to see that on the front end and it has to be built into the plan and not just wait to the back end, oh, we'll figure it out later. Because figuring it out later doesn't work so good.
Right.
Experience has taught us.
So I'd like to try and address some of these concerns. From our meeting with the redeveloper, we know that they have been speaking to a specific grocer and the grocer has been a partner in the development as far as recommendations for building signage and parking strategies. There's a letter of intent that exists. So I think that the market is involved in, from the developer's perspective, in signing off on what they believe works for them. I agree with you-
I hear what you're saying about believing that.
I don't because it's uns sworn double hearsay.
I-
I take exceptions for that, I think.
What he said, I was going to say it a little bit different. I hear it, but I don't respect it.
But that's what he said, okay?
But I think what Ira's saying, that's what we were told, that these plans are being developed with the, so I wanted to point you to page, direct you to page 42. And on page 42 of the plan, if you look under the requirements for grocery signs, we were cognizant that visibility is an issue. So the signage requirements for the grocery store have some of the most, allow some of the largest signs that we've ever permitted before, again, so that you can see it from Bloomfield Avenue.
Where are, yeah, where are they going to be located?
So if you read, it can be wall signs, it's on the wall, it can be-
Which wall?
The wall facing Bloomfield Avenue and the wall facing Grove Street. And so, wall signs permitted on each frontage. So I don't know if it's, if the grocery store is actually fronting on Glen Ridge Avenue. There might be, I think that there's going to be different retail stores there, but it's definitely fronting on Grove Street and on Bloomfield Avenue. But Janice, if the intent is for people to drive on Glen Ridge Avenue, they need to know that the grocery store is there. You have to have a sign on Glen Ridge Avenue, wouldn't you think?
And that's, if you're talking about a sign on the building, again, if you look at the drawing, that sign is recessed so far into that site on the other end of that plaza that you're not going to be able to see it until you're right in front of it.
Let me, if you let me finish. So not only do we allow a sign that is large, it's a 68-square-foot sign on either side, it's a projecting sign, but we also allow it to be taller, up to 17 feet. Let's see, oh, 40 feet, okay. The sign can be up to 40 feet tall. So it doesn't have to be just on the first, first floor of the building. It could be 40 feet on the building so that you'll be able to see it.
No, 40, it could be up 40 feet.
The sign itself is not 40 feet. No, 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 it'll be located at 40.
I think the point is, Janice-
So you'll be able to see it. It's larger, it's located higher on the building. So you have the wall signs, we're also allowing a projecting sign. So again, these are not the normal signs that we would permit.
I don't think it's adequate because you, the way that you've got buildings, the way that you've got buildings situated on the site, the walls are blocked by building C when you're coming west. And when you're coming east down, you're not, you're going to see the train station and the sign is going to be behind the facade of the train station unless you're going to put the sign up above the, and that's going to look like hell. So, you know, that, I don't think that that part of the plan is basically adequate at this point and we need, we would need to take a look at that and flesh that out.
And you'd also have to see where the parking is. You'd have to know where you're going to go.
Right, and we need to account for, we need to account for wayfaring signs that are on Bloomfield Avenue and on the streets that are, that can be seen from the car and that people can navigate.
So what I think that we should do is, listening to this, is put-
You could need to add some more things in.
Put additional language in the redevelopment plan emphasizing the need for wayfinding signs for automobile, for vehicles to find the parking. We need additional requirements so that the supermarket is more visible, okay?
And, yeah, it needs to be thought out, it needs to be thought out. We need some input on that. And also if-
Well, I don't think we're going to have all the answers, but at least we're going to require them to, to address these issues when they come in with the site plan.
Right, and if the-
Because I don't, we don't have the answers right now.
Right.
The site plan would have to answer those.
But again, we want to make sure that the language that we have in here is sufficient enough to get a favorable solution at the site plan stage. And that's going to take some upfront cooperation from the developer and whoever the supermarket is in order to, because if we say, okay, we're going to have a sign here, we're going to have a sign there, and if the develop, and if whoever's going in there, when we get to site plan, oh, we can't have it that way, it has to be here, or our corporate signature is this, so it has to be that, you know? That's what we don't, that's what we don't want to run into.
I can guarantee you, if the planning board says they want more signage, I don't think that the developer or the store is going to say no to that.
No, but we might say that we don't want the sign that the developer's got. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, then that's-
Which is what we've seen on multiple applications, the Shell station, the previous supermarket, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
You know? So I think we have an opportunity to sort that out here. Based on past experience, we know we need to have some really goods, well-defined standards in here in order to have a successful site plan.
Okay, well, maybe that's something the redevelopment subcommittee can look at in more detail. I mean, I know we have, we already, we require a master signage plan. So that's a little bit different from some of those previous applications from years and years ago before we didn't have a process that's emphasized, perhaps, a master signage plan for the grocery store.
I think Ira has something to say, then I have a question, but-
It's a follow-up question. So for reference, the proposed building A facade is essentially where the facade is now for Popeyes and so on. So any one of you has a chance to go out and see how the signage that's there, which is smaller than what's proposed, how it functions today. But one of the reasons it is visible from Bloomfield Ave is the absence of street trees. The question is, would the board be, based on what I'm hearing, open to revisiting or relaxing the street tree requirement to enable lines of sight that are affected?
Wait, but before we get there, we're still talking about a 75-foot building blocking the visibility too, right?
Yeah, building C is in front of Popeyes, isn't it?
So it's not the trees that were, that's blocking it, it's a 75-foot building, right? So, so before we even get to that phase, we've got to address that issue, so.
Okay, well, once you, if you keep the street trees, I was just looking ahead. If you keep the street trees you've got, building C plus the street trees impedes in the way you guys are concerned about. I just wanted to put on the table as an issue we shouldn't-
Look, we're here to address everything and every, you know, we'll look at every possible solution, but if we're talking about a sign that has a maximum height of 40 feet in the air, right, that's blocked by a building that's 75 feet, that doesn't solve our problem.
And, and Ira, I agree with you, it needs to be put on the table now and that's what needs to be a part of the evaluation as to how the plan gets revised. That needs to be filtered into it now. You need to actually look.
We need to do it now, not at site plan review, which is the point, yeah.
I just want to, I just want to step back a second from, signage is a very important component of this, but I, my concern is a little bit broader and I think, and it's a question for you all to address in sort of the next iteration, is, it's the following. This whole thing is, is in a lot of ways designed around a supermarket. It's the biggest retail component and it's a, it's a big part of the footprint of the project and it's going to work or it's not going to work. And if it doesn't work, there's a gigantic hole in this thing for 50 years that, you know, if, if the first supermarket that comes in with this development doesn't work, I don't know what, what fills the, what fills the void. And so we have an interest in working with you to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to establish a viable supermarket here. The signage is one part of it. And so I get the business considerations, I get that they're not ready to surface yet and, you know, we're doing this through the uns sworn double hearsay, no offense. But we, we're looking at this and we're saying, in our experience as members of this community, walkers and drivers, we're looking at this and we're saying, I'm not sure people are going to shop here if they have a choice. And so I don't know how we can do a better job at this stage before site plan, but I think what we're saying, and I may, I think our chairman always says it better than I do, but I think what we're saying is, we need to know at this stage that there's enough input from the supermarket that's planned for this, that they know what they're getting into and that they're seeing this as a viable plan for the long term. Because if it's not built into this-
Rather than trying to come to us at site plan and say, oh, we need this change, we need that change, we can't do that. You know, I mean, if they're on board, if they're there, then they should, they should be part of this process because this is being tailored to their function, basically.
I'd like to add to that because I know that you've always said that an important part of this whole thing is the supermarket. We've talked about the need for affordable housing, we did the need for preserving the historic site, but as is important, right on the top of the list is that we need a supermarket that's a viable supermarket. And it was said that the path marked failed partly because you couldn't see it because of the building was tucked inside. And I think the other thing, you not only need to see the building, but you need to know where you're going to get access and how you're going to get access. And that has not, in all the conversation about the plazas and the rest of it, that has not really been anything that has been explained, and I think it's one of the most important things to be explained, is not only just to see the sign, but to have access to actually getting there. And I haven't been a developer, but I have been a customer for many, many years. And I know that when I go to the supermarket, that I generally need to have a way to carry big packages from the inside to the car. And a parking deck where you've got to go up a escalator or whatever, three floors to go to get the things in your car with the bag that you forgot in the car to begin with because you have to have the bag now. But at any rate, that you need to have access that makes it an attractive place to go. If you have better options and it's very inconvenient, it's not going to survive. So that, I think that there really needs to be some thought given to the surviving of a viable supermarket, not just something that we do casually and put the focus on the housing or with the focus on the, on the social, social plazas and whatever. We need to really focus on making that viable and I haven't seen it so far.
Because the really weird part of this, which is, I think it's time to talk about what we're talking about, I mean, the really weird part of this is that we're trying to build the supermarket to compete with supermarkets in the neighborhood that have gigantic parking lots. And yet we're doing it in this compressed space that we're trying to develop into, into a centerpiece for the town. And that's, those two things are very, very difficult to square. I don't know that they're squareable. And we certainly can't square them without somebody coming in and saying, I plan to run a viable supermarket here for the next 25 years and here's how. Here's how I'm going to compete with the ShopRite in Bloomfield. Here's how I'm going to compete with the Kings on Valley, the Acme that's right down. If you can drive, you can drive to a lot of places. If you can't drive, this is what we're trying to solve for. But you, in order for a supermarket to be viable, it needs to attract both, both parts of that. And it's, I don't, I don't see how it's going to work, but I'm not in the supermarket business. The guys who are in the supermarket business are going to come in and tell us how it works.
And we heard a lot of that testimony, Les, go around. Can I finish up with building C? So building C, as I understand, is a 75-foot office building with retail on the first floor, according to the plan. How and where are delivery trucks going to service that building?
It is anticipated that some loading will have to occur, you know, because it is a freestanding building with frontage on all four sides. As I recall from the concept plans, there was a small loading area that would have to be accessed from the main plaza loop.
So that main plaza loop, it's for loading area, like you just said, for building C. It also seems to be, you're calling it a drop-off point for the main supermarket entrance there on Bloomfield Avenue. And it has parking. So I guess, my, my point really is that I find that we are sacrificing and compromising open space, which is a big, you know, big want, a big need for this plan, is we're trading off open space for building height. And then you, the open space that we're given is compromised, in my view, by this U-shaped parking and drop-off method. Because it's right by the main entrance of the supermarket. Because it's right by the main entrance of the supermarket. So people who can't find the entrance going on Lackawanna Plaza are gonna pull in there. I don't know if they'll adhere to the 15-minute parking, God knows, that's, you know, an enforcement issue. And then you're gonna have loading for building C. I mean, how is the loading for the Pig and Prince going to be managed? So I just find it, you know, problematic from that point of view to say that we are giving open space, and yet we're compromising the open space with this parking U thing going through it.
I, I think there's plenty of models for shared use spaces like this enabling loading, especially when you structure things so loading happens in off-hours, when the grocery store is not being occupied, when the plaza is not primarily used for public space. So I think that's certainly a surmountable thing. If that happens in site plan, when we require that loading happen at certain hours for that building or, or something like that, I, I don't see that as too big of a-
Well, I, I see it as a problem, anyway. I mean, should I continue on with my points, or?
No, I think you're good.
Okay, so my, okay, since we're talking about parking and all that. So I have a real concern about the Glen Ridge Avenue corridor there that abuts this building. We're saying that we're putting a bike lane in there. And right across from building B is the post office. The post office is a heavily utilized community, you know, benefit, I guess, having the post office there. People pull up, they go into the post office, they pull out. In this instance, I can envision them crossing the street and going to the supermarket, doing it all in one fell swoop. But if you have a bike lane that goes down on Glen Ridge Avenue, you're not allowed to park on the bike lane. So are we losing all the parking spots that are opposite the post office? I, I can answer that, no. Well, what's going on there? Because the, the, the design will have the bike lane between the curb and the parking lane. So there'll be a bike lane next to the curb, and then you'll have a parking lane on the street side of that. So you're not gonna lose any parking- Kind of in Manhattan, the way it's done in New York. I don't know about Manhattan.
Are we gonna widen the street?
They're gonna have to widen the street. Oh, they're widening the street. They have to widen the cartway so that you can have the bike lane on the inside, and then you'll have the parking between the bike lane and the street.
So that'll be a protected bike lane?
Yeah, well, bollarded?
I don't know if we'll have, I, I think we call for bollards.
Okay.
We haven't designed it to that level. I know we, there, there's a maintenance issue. We might have the, what we've been looking towards is the movable bollards so that the snowplows can get in there during weather events. But, yes, so it'll be protected ultimately with movable bollards and a, a three-foot buffer between the parking lane and the curb. So you're still gonna have a, a two-way Glen Ridge Avenue by the post office? You're gonna have parking on the north side? You're gonna have your two lanes, you're gonna have parking on the south side, and then a bike lane? Right.
Where is the, and the loading for the supermarket?
Well, that's the other point. If on Glen Ridge Avenue, as I understand it, the entrance to the supermarket from Glen Ridge Avenue is the entrance for trucks as well. Trucks can come from Glen Ridge Avenue, they can come from Lackawanna Plaza, and the loading is within, I guess, building B or building A. Is that correct? The intent is that the loading area will be, and, and we don't have the details, but the loading area will be entirely interior of building A or building B, building B, so that we don't see it. It's not gonna affect the neighboring property, properties. And it's gonna be designed so that the, the trucks can pull in and pull out without affecting the adjoining prop, I mean, like, that's the intent. Or underground, yeah.
I think it's important to just look at what the plan actually requires, which is, because this is really kind of getting into a site plan issue. But the, the redevelopment plan states, "No vehicular loading or driveways. Two internal loading docks are permitted within building facades facing public rights of way or required signature open spaces." However, such vehicular uses are permitted to face internal driveways and alleys.
So that's not facing a public-
You said two internal loading docks?
"No vehicular loading or driveways to internal loading docks are permitted within building facades facing public rights of way or required signature open spaces."
What was the sentence before that?
What page are you on?
That's the first sentence.
Where are you?
Yeah.
Uh, this is on page 33. So I, the point is, the intent, the requirement of the plan is to keep loading docks off of frontages facing public rights of way or open spaces.
So is, is the driveway into building B and A from Glen Ridge Avenue, is that considered a public right of way?
No.
No, okay.
During the pause here, I, I want to mention, um, planning board member Loffman's comment about traffic and the bikes near the post office. That's simply what's proposed, and if you thought that was too much and parking should be removed. This is similar to my comment about the trees. If, if you think parking should be removed, uh, I think the 60 days are really the planning board's opportunity to kind of interrogate some assumptions about what typical streetscapes look like, and maybe parking isn't on both sides. So it doesn't have to be a conflict that's forced on anyone, it's something the planning board can revisit and redefine.
Well, it strikes me that we would never say, get rid of parking when we have a proposed 375-unit building, you know. And you, you yourselves on this plan, it says something about part of Glen Ridge Avenue will be reserved for residents. Uh, I forget what page it's on. I'm, yeah, there's something that says Glen Ridge Avenue parking will be reserved for residents, which says to me, do you really have enough parking for residents within the site itself?
That's unfamiliar.
I can direct you to that, yeah, yeah. I don't think that was not, that was not the intent, so we'll look through the section of the plan. You better look through it because that's in there, yeah. There was no intent to have resident-only parking on Glen Ridge Avenue, yes?
I think it's important to keep in mind that even if we take a couple of parking spaces from Glen Ridge Avenue, we're gonna be building hundreds more.
Hundreds more that are used by people who are going to the supermarket and live in the, live in the buildings.
And anyone accessing many of the downtown-
I would ask that we, we do maybe reserve some of our parking questions to Mr. Giosa. Okay. So who can talk about the share of parking disposal? I have another question. Where will the taxi stand be? I see you have the bus stand, but the taxi stand is used by a lot of people. Where is that? The taxi stand right now, I don't think it's addressed in the redevelopment plan. No, it's not. Yeah, no, so that's, we know right now it's on Lackawanna Plaza. I'd like to see that in the plan so that people know there will be a taxi stand there. Well, it's there right now. And it's not being removed. It's not being, the, the redevelopment plan does not propose that it be removed. Yeah, because you have, we also have, don't we also have a bus station, a bus? There's a bus stop on Bloom- That's there already as well, right? There's a bus, well, the bus stop is on Bloomfield Avenue, that will remain. I mean, that's very important that we keep the bus stop on Bloomfield Avenue. But it's stated in the redevelopment plan that the bus stop will be there, but you're silent on the taxi stand, that's all I'm saying. Right, I think we've had some, and right now, the taxi stand is permitted through a different ordinance in the township. There's been discussion for several years about relocating it. That may happen separately from this redevelopment plan. Okay, well, it strikes me that people have needed to get, that's part of the problem. The problem really is access to a supermarket from areas that don't have a supermarket nearby, so the taxi stand is vital. That's it, well, that, no, 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 that's not what the taxi stand does. We, if we have short-term parking, like a drop-off pickup area, I think perhaps that's what this plan embraces, is a drop-off area or a pickup area. Taxi stand is not necessarily just for the, for the supermarket. That's just where they keep their taxis during the day. They do that now, they've been doing it for years, even though there's no supermarket there. So it doesn't have to be at this location. Okay, continuing on that theme, you just mentioned that where the current Lackawanna Plaza, I guess, is a small parking lot in front of the terminal sheds. I think that's supposed to be a pickup and drop-off area, according to the plan. Is that correct?
Right, yes.
So why do we need a pickup and drop-off area also in the main plaza, if we have it already there?
What, in, in the same spirit, uh, I'm just gonna say Mr. Jacobson's, how I answered Mr. Jacobson's comment, the, the grocer believes that the past, present, and future of supermarket buying will include a lot of deliveries, deliveries to individuals. So this is a place where, in theory, people can come and pick up purchases they've made online, and they get their bags there. Maybe they walk in, pick up the bags from trolleys, and bring them back to their car. Or alternatively, if the grocer has vans, the vans would wait there, load up for 15 minutes, and then head off to homes or buildings in the area. Keeping them off of that loop facing Bloomfield. Can I just, um, can I just go back to height for just a second? Do you mind if we get off the parking for a little bit, or? I feel like we're reviewing a site plan instead of a redevelopment plan in a way. But, um, 'cause there's not a lot of really hooks in the master plan, in my opinion, that we need to explore here. But there's one thing, Keenan, that you brought up about height. And I think I understand, height is 47 feet in the master plan, but the, can you, in the best possible way, explain the rationale to justify 87 feet? If you can do that for me, that would be great. And I know you mentioned form-based code, and I think that what we heard was, from the sight lines, 47 doesn't, I'm sorry, yeah, 40, a taller building won't appear as tall as a shorter building, which the, which the master plan requires. So I think more than anything else, that's what I'd like to really hear. And, 'cause I, um-
Thank you, yeah, I think that's a great question. I mean, that's really a focus for the board's review, right? So I would start by saying, in terms of the master plan and what it states, it's correct, it's factual to state that specifically within this zone, it says, references four stories and 47 feet. But then there's a number of other sort of policy directives relative to future development, which refer to sort of density bonus concepts, right? So for example, on page 31 of the master plan, it says, "The township should investigate the feasibility of using density bonuses as a tool to ensure that development greater than the currently permitted height and density shall require complementary public improvements." And there's a number of related statements and, and languages sort of supports that concept in the master plan. So, so the first piece is to sort of think about this in terms of, okay, what, what is the township getting here in terms of public improvements and public benefits that could potentially support the idea of greater height? And by the way, with density, I think the existing zoning permits 55 units per acre, which is actually greater than what's permitted by this, by this redevelopment plan. And then the second piece of it, and this is what I think Ira started to get into with some of the imagery, is looking at this site and the physical characteristics of this site, the topography we talked about, its sheer size is another very important consideration. What is it about this site that could maybe accommodate additional building height and density here that may not be appropriate in other places in town, but here can be mitigated because of those physical factors? So you can see, when we looked at the concept plans, we started to look at some of the massing that Ira shared, there are ways to set back buildings and to employ upper-story step backs that we believe can accommodate buildings taller than four stories, 45 feet, or six stories, 67 feet on this site without substantially impacting the surrounding area and really causing visual impacts. So I think there's support in the master plan for that concept. And secondly, I think this property is one that can take additional building height. It's really a unique opportunity in town to, to, to do that.
Could I have a question on that? When I look at the master plan, um, it basically had said that, well, the, the present zoning, which, because the master plan in this respect has not been implemented, but the present zoning is six stories. And the master plan had recommended that that was too high and that we wanted to go lower because the surrounding area, remember, the master plan is very much focused on the importance of making the, it, making the, whatever is done in Lackawanna Plaza compatible with the surrounding area. And the surrounding area has one- and three-story and fairly low building heights. We've got the Y there as well, we've got the post office, we've got the park, we've got everything around it which is not that tall. So the master plan had recommended four stories. The present plan was for maximum of six stories, 67 feet. The master plan has recommended that we do a little less there. So when you come to us with a plan that says, "Don't do less, do twice as high", I don't know if that is, falls within the realm of negotiating a little change in terms of getting resources, you know, getting benefits, a little density. It seems to me that the height is so extreme that that falls beyond the, the, the range of, we'll, we'll compromise height a little in order to get a benefit. So I, I, it just, I, I just don't understand how we can go quite that far as a recommendation. And perhaps you could encourage me in some way to understand that.
All right, well, I'll take one more crack at this, and then I welcome any input from Ira and Janice as well. The master plan does also sort of recognize that in the realm of redevelopment, it, it's perfectly appropriate to approach things on a site-specific basis, right? And it specifically says that a flexible approach to redevelopment, stating that active, activity nodes are not and should not be uniform. Instead, each node should be developed in a manner that is sympathetic to the character and scale of its surrounding areas while allowing construction to meet market demand. So again, here being very close to the train station, it's a very large site, the topography, everything we just discussed, I think that needs to be weighed against, um, the, the potential public benefits here. And let's just remember what some of those are. I mean, that the signature open spaces, it's over 70,000 square feet in new publicly accessible open space, that's gonna be very high-quality, programmable, exciting open space for the community. You get affordable housing that's way above and beyond what's typically required. I mean, even the 20% requirement here in town is actually more than what's required in a lot of other communities, based on my experience. That's the baseline, and then on top of that, you have the 10% workforce housing provision, the new grocer, a lot of exciting new retail space here, um, a really high-level of design, all the adaptive reuse elements. There's really a lot to be said in terms of the, the potential public benefits that you're not guaranteed to get if this was developed under just straight zoning. You know, if someone comes in with a site application and says it conforms, you really don't have the ability to, to ask for these public improvements. So that's, it's ultimately for council to decide and the board to provide their policy recommendations to council. But that's, as I see it, sort of the, the balancing that you need to evaluate.
The, the, the stepbacks and the setbacks that are all over the plan seem large. And you do have a couple of drawings that you're showing on this. I guess we'll be able to keep this, we'll be able to see this, this will be presented as evidence?
Yes, and we have, uh, board exhibits of, of these as well.
Is there a way to do more? So for example, if one were to come out of, if you're going south on Cloverhill Place, you come out on Cloverhill and Glen Ridge Ave, you look to your right, what does it look like when you come out of that, you know, two-family residential zone? You know, that's a sensitive neighborhood, so when, when those folks come out, what are they looking at? Another good view might be, if you're walking down the street on Glen Ridge Avenue in front of the post office, and you look off to your right, what does it look like? And I can't quite see that, and I think that what you're putting words to, um, sounds right, but if we could see a few things, it would be really helpful, I think. Or if you're driving down Grove, like what, if you're just driving across, what do you see? So to, to help get there, uh, just to point you to a couple of tools we've got. We, we do have the models here today, ones at a smaller scale. They're meant, they're light and- Oh, not those, I'm sorry. They're meant to be- Yeah, because I'm, I'm bigger than that. No, I was thinking, what I was thinking of is, if you were literally, like, what do you, what do you see visually? Right. But I think that is helpful, but I'm sorry. So in addition to the, the models, photo montages, number six and number seven are taken exactly from the points of view you just described. And I guess it's a matter of process for the chair and director tally to talk about, like, at what point does that photo montage show itself? Is it important for the board to try and get a massing study now that populates those two views? Or does it wait for site plan? But, but certainly it's teed up to answer the question you've asked. Because it might be, it might show good stuff, I, I just don't know.
I agree with you, Tony, I think it's important to have it now. Because I think one of the issues that we're all having, struggling with, is understanding why we need, I, I respect this design, I think it's been thoughtful. I think there are a lot of amenities and, and there, there are a lot of, of public benefit to the town. But I don't necessarily understand why we would need to sacrifice heights to the extent that is proposed in the plan as, as it is now. I mean, even in the examples of, you know, the, the conceptual plans that you gave us, the Welsh plan is centered around, you know, this great historic asset. It's all low-rise buildings, they're all three stories, right?
buildings, they're all three stories, right? You gave us the example of Knoxville, right? Great town center, it's all centered around low-rise, three-story buildings. And, you know, now, we're coming with a conceptual plan that is, you know, two, essentially in height, two stories above the old master plan recommendation of six stories, right? It's almost double what we would want to see if it were a four-story. We have an opportunity here to do a lot. You, you mentioned the topography of the sites that E and D are on. Because they're lower, you know, why does that necessarily mean that we have to build so much higher? So, I, I think we're trying to understand the, the scale of this, and if we could have a visual, maybe it would put some of us at ease. I don't know that it would. But, but you mentioned, I'll go back to the, you said the claretage phenomenon, why that building works the way it does on Church Street. Strikes me that that's a large building surrounded by low-rise buildings. That, to me, makes sense why it would work on, on a street like Church Street. So, maybe you could explain that more to us and why it makes sense to have such heights in buildings D, E, A, C, and B.
Well, on your last point, because of the great amount of open space that surrounds these buildings, it would be super-low scaled, you know what I mean? You're, you're comparing the claretage apartments to its immediate context, which is lower by a few stories. It's a same phenomenon that would happen here.
But the claretage is not surrounding open space, it's part of a low-rise street, right? Low-rise neighborhood, that is, Church Street. You show me these low-rise buildings in Knoxville, I think that looks great. I think that would be a huge community benefit, right? So, why, how does that concept translate to the site, that, to the development, redevelopment plan here? How does the concept, the claretage being six feet versus like this low-rise, you know, sample that you gave us? Like, I'm not seeing the correlation.
So, first, it's not a direct analogy, because the claretage is a sheer six stories tall. So, there's that. But where it is analogous is that I think you were saying the fact that the claretage has smaller buildings around it helps balance things out.
Right. And in this plan, we don't see that, right? I mean, you've got, the townhomes on the other side, but, I mean, this site, when you're standing in that square, that main plaza, you're surrounded by tall buildings. And it dwarfs the historic asset, that dwarfed the historic asset.
I think other views would show otherwise. Something I did at the 29th, which I didn't do today, but you can, well, the way that Building C has been articulated, the orange patch is bigger than Building C, but the footprint of Building C is about the same size as the footprint of the waiting room. So, this building that you're concerned about blocking view to signage and so on, it's featured prominently in the photo montage I showed, but as a building form, that's because it's the closest thing to us in that view, but as a building form, I think it's a lot less big than you're imagining, but that's where these additional views come in. So, the idea that that outdoor room is defined by two really big buildings and a small waiting room, I think isn't, isn't correct yet. And I, I hope you'll agree with me when we have more visual material...
Well, I hope we do get more visual, I would like to see that.
Yeah, yeah, I hear that.
Okay.
So, you said two things a little early that I don't want to, I don't want to lose track of, because I think they're very important. The first is that ultimately, it's going to be the council's decision what goes here. But you also said, this site, I know, I'm going to, I'm going to get some of your words wrong, but the gist was that this site can take more because of its topography. And that, I, I was struck by that phrasing, because I, I think you used it deliberately. And I don't necessarily disagree with it, but it goes to the question of, what are we trying to solve for, for this? And for whose, you know, for whose ultimate benefit? That, in other words, it is, if the goal is to squeeze as much into this site as the site can take, and that the developer, by virtue of getting that monetary benefit, is providing these beneficial public spaces, then we're in one place. If, on the other hand, the developer...
Well, that, that option, that's, that's not it, okay?
Well, but, but it is. I mean, that's, but that's, well...
But that's why we would give certain leeway, right? Certain density, by the way, height and density, right, are two separate concepts, right? So, we don't necessarily need to give extra height to get, give additional density. But to Mr. Jacobson's point, this is, to get these things, we're saying we need more economic benefit for the developers. Is that essentially what we're talking about?
Well, I just, it, it was put that way. And so, in other words, I, what, what, the, the elephant in the room that we've, that Mr. Iannoli has started to talk about with height and that we're sort of starting to talk about a little bit with density is, you know, by the way, I want to, this is just speaking for me, I'm not speaking, I think that you've designed a beautiful plan here. And I think that I believe that there, this is, this is the last big site in Montclair, and we need to do something impactful here, and I commend you for all of the work that's gone into it. But the question that we're, that we're noodling about here is, does it have to be that big? Does it have to be that dense?
I'm going to take a crack at that, to relieve Keenan for a spell. So, and this relates to board member Willis's comment as well. You all previously saw a plan that was mostly around four stories, the Hampshire Plan, his board, and not all of you were here for that. But the, for those of you who remember it, the Hampshire Plan didn't offer deep setbacks, nor did it offer deep step backs. It brought the buildings, these four-story buildings, pretty much to the lot line, close to it. And there was little to no public space. So, what do you do if you are a thoughtful redeveloper, looking at the history of how that project came to be, and you're looking for a better solution? In order to free up that ground space, that square footage ends up somewhere else. And then, it becomes a question of, where do you put it? And how high do you make it? Now, we're, we're at five stories on Building C, and the others are six stories. And so, you know, four stories to six is two stories more, but you've found a way to create public space that didn't exist otherwise.
But, Ira, your six-story building is 87 feet. Well, one of them is 89.5, one of them is 87.
Yep.
And the other six-story buildings in town are only 75 and 64.
So, I'll talk about that, if you'd like to know what that's about.
I would like to know what that's, I would like to know what that's about, but when you say it's six stories, it almost comes off disingenuous, you know?
Oh, okay. I don't want to be that.
Yeah, it's, it's six stories, but it's, it's a whole lot of six-story.
Okay. So, just to, not to diminish the heightness of it all, the supermarket is, supermarket building, Building A is as tall as it is, because, and I think you've all heard this before, and you've been in supermarkets too, when you look at a supermarket ceiling, the ceiling you see is not 10 or 12 feet above you. It's going to be much higher than that.
Why isn't that building five stories, then? Let me, let's cut to the chase. We understand that the building below, and you've got to get those tractor trailers under there, too.
That's right.
Why not make that building five stories? Why does it have to be six stories?
I think that the redeveloper and we, looking at the site, knowing that that was also the low point of the site, felt that if there was a need for extra square footage, that putting it there meant it would be a little less visible due to it being in a depression in the site.
It's only a low point of the site from certain angles. From other angles, that site looks really flat. And you can, you have a really flat, open view of a lot of space that you don't have from anywhere else in the central business district. So, and, and I'm kind of wondering, too, how the front goes, because there's a dip, there's that dip in the front, and you, you're going to build that up, but you're going to keep it level to the bottom, so that public space is going to be on somewhat of an incline or something like that. But in any case, skipping over that, again, why does it have to be five, six stories? Why can't it be five stories? Why can't the, why do the buildings have to be as tall as they are? That's, that's the big, that's one of the big overwhelming questions.
And the answer can't just be because it can take it.
And the answer, and if the answer is this, then say it.
The answer is not because it can take it, right? I mean, from a planning perspective, you've heard my opinion that this is a site that can accommodate building height greater than four stories, okay?
But that's, well, that's a, that's, I understand what you're saying there, but understand that that's a matter of opinion. Okay?
Fair enough.
I don't think we have an answer to that question.
But I think the opinion of a lot of us is it doesn't comply with the master plan.
Right. I think that's what we're hearing. And we will, I think, I think the message...
So, so the answer is then, why? Why, why?
So, and let me, let me shift gears, sir. If we give up some of the open, if we give up, if I'm understanding what you're saying, if we give up open space, we can get lower buildings. Yes or no?
I can't speak to like a major kind of statement like that.
Well, you, but your statement was, is that the reason why the buildings are higher is because we have to have open space, and we brought them back, so that's the price that we're paying. So, if we give that up and we say, "Okay, we'll take less open space here," maybe we'll, maybe we'll take that space and relocate and have it someplace else in the township, or have some other public benefit in the township, because lord knows, we need a lot of other stuff. You know? But, you know, maybe if, if it's one of those things where it has to be X amount of density and X amount of this in order to make it float, then maybe the open space has to be reconsidered, too. Be, you know, in order to, in order to come to something that would be agreeable to everybody in the town.
I, I don't think we have answers to this, to this comment. But I think this is something that we will take back and, and see, you know, what, what can be done, what options we have.
Just make no mistake, I, I, I agree that, yeah, that's a nice plan. I like the open space. But I don't know whether, if, if you're saying that to have that open space, we have to have six-story buildings that are as tall as seven, taller than seven-story buildings in town.
Right.
I, that's a, that price, I don't know whether that's a price that we can afford, or whether we want to afford it, you know? And, and because this is a, this, you know, you've been saying all along, this is a very unique portion of town. I never thought about it prior to you bringing up the, the thought of, "Oh, we're creating a neighborhood here," because I already thought this was part of a neighborhood.
Yes, exactly.
You know? And when you talk about, you know, when you make a statement, when you read from the master plan, and you make a statement about development sympathetic to the surrounding neighborhood, that's not sympathetic to anything around it. This, this clearly shows how, just how much bigger it is than everything else around it. So, I have a problem, you know, putting those two concepts together. And, you know, just trying to, you know, there's things, there's great things about this, but I don't know whether we can afford the cost of all of this, so is there another way to do it?
Well, I, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but when you look at stuff like this, you don't fly in the sky. And I think that, these are hard, this is really good, these are great models, but we don't look at our city like this every day. We walk around, we drive around. So, if you did something simple by using a computer program, you know, some sort of simplistic view of looking at the building from the perspective of people walking around and driving around, and that, I think that might hurt you a bit, because it does look, it does look bigger. It might look better if we saw it from the ground, because you don't see...
And I'm not, and I don't necessarily, I, I don't know whether or not that's necessarily true, because I'm thinking about, because this, from certain aspects, certain sides of it, it's relatively flat, you can stand like in front of the Firestone business, and you get a wide swath that looks pretty level in town. And you get a very wide swath, and you can see all of the buildings A, B, and C. And the step backs don't make any difference. Don't, don't lessen the massing, because you see the whole buildings in one sweep. And then, if you go to the next block, to the corner of Gates, and you look at it from that angle, again, you're looking at it flat, and I'm picturing, you're seeing, you're seeing a tiny train station with this giant building behind it. And you're seeing the buildings on D and E also are coming in to perspective across your open space. So, you, you get, you don't get those, oh, you're standing next to the building and looking up, and you only see four stories. You only get that from certain limited sidewalk areas. But this is not because of the, the street, the streetscape around it, you've got a wide boulevard running in front of it, you know? It, it disrupts that. It's not the same as it is on Valley Road, and Orange Road.
Yes. I'm glad you're, all of you are working hard to imagine what this will feel like and be like, and I don't think any of us would deny that any development here would be transformative. The Hampshire Plan would have been transformative, this one would be as well. I think the distinguishing features are that this plan contributes and gives much more back to the neighborhood and the community than the Hampshire Plan did.
It gives the supermarket, and it gives some open space, but it gives the supermarket. That's the biggest thing.
Absolutely. The supermarket is an anchor, but the historic elements were disrespected, severely diminished under the Hampshire Plan, and this one struggles mightily to not just preserve or adaptively reuse, but make them features. And Janice is right, I don't, none of us can tell you, are the six stories what's needed in order to preserve and create that public space? I just, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't know. But what if the answer is yes? What does that mean to the planning board?
I think there's, I think there's a number, there's a certain fixed number of units that the developer has in mind that he wants to put on this space, commercial or residential, all right? So, you know, and basically, we've got to play Jenga with how, if, if we're going to go with that developer, how do we fit those units and the supermarket and the parking? And then, what's left over? And how do we get it to look as nice? Oh, and how do we preserve the train station in doing that, too? And how do we get it looking as nice as we can? And we've tried this three times?
Three times.
Before? Okay. And so, you know, again, we've talked about, in all of those three times, height has always been an issue, okay? And this is bigger than anything that we've seen before, isn't it?
Much bigger.
So, it's not my imagination.
Not at all, but I think the two do go together, whether it's A equals B, meaning building mass is what justifies every square foot of open space, or there's play, I don't know. But in terms of town planning, that is how it works.
So, you know, it's, it's, it's a matter of, if, can we get those units on this piece of property in a configuration that is not going to overwhelm everything else that's around it, that will be, in my mind, sympathetic to the surrounding? Because I don't think this is, this is not a new neighborhood. This is, this is not Starrett City, this is not Co-op City that we're building here. This is, this is a few buildings here in Montclair. We don't want Starrett City in Montclair.
That's what it looks like.
We want, we want something as part of the neighborhood that exists already, that is, is going to blend in with that.
Just, just a quick point of information. I, I know that Mr. Giosa's here, and I just want to make sure, it's 9:50, I just want to make sure that if we need to do...
We have Mr. Giosa and Mr. Fischinger, who had, you know, Mr. Fischinger...
So, we should, we should shift gears.
Can I just add one thing? Yeah, just one thing, just to add, because I went to the trouble of looking at the heights of surrounding buildings, okay? And if you look at Grove and Glen Ridge, that apartment building on the corner there, that's 40 feet. That's half the size of the tallest building on this site. The Matthew Carter, which is right next to it, right behind, is 35 feet. The Union Gardens on Glen Ridge Avenue is 40 feet high. The one that's bigger is the Willow on Glen Ridge, the Plowker Building there, that's 60 feet. The Bankers Building on the corner there is 38 feet. The Verizon Building is 49 feet. The Greek Taverna is 43 feet. The Manhattan Storage, what we just looked at, is 51 feet. The Pig and Prince itself is 41 feet, and One Greenwood is 38 feet. So, this is totally out of scale with the surrounding neighborhood. Anyway. If I can switch to traffic, you have Joe Fischinger from Bright View Engineering. I know I gave you a copy of his report. He reviewed the traffic assessment that was prepared by BDP Holdings as part of their concept plan. And so, Joe, if you could just give us your comments on the redevelopment plan. I know you made a couple of recommendations.
Yeah, fine. If I may, I'm just going to move this out of the way so I don't pop it over. So, so what I'll start with is to compliment you all, and all the questions you're asking are the same questions I have to ask before I would even do the traffic study. You look at this plan and the question... You look at this plan and the question of, well, where's the parking? Where are the access points? It's kind of hard to act to put all the pencil to paper and do all the math on, well, how many cars are going to turn here and how many are going to go there? Until we know where where the parking lots are, where the access points are. That's when we're preparing a traffic study, part of what we look at is not just where the access points are, but how big the parking lots are. To, you know, to make some reasonable judgments about where traffic's going. I'm not going to send ninety percent of the traffic into a parking lot that only holds ten percent of the cars. So keeping that in mind, that a lot of these questions really need to have some definition to get a definitive traffic study. Because where the access points are and where the parking goes is going to define which way the cars move in the network and whether or not they're going to work. Given all of that, with the information we do have, what hap, what Langen did when they did their preliminary assessment. So they did counts back in twenty seventeen. They did new counts in March of twenty-two. And they're in that, they're, they stated at that time, well, the twenty seventeen counts were higher, so they used them again instead of relying on the twenty twenty-two counts. Now, you can remember Bloomfield Avenue was still under construction in March. They were still building the new traffic lights. There were still things going on. It would not surprise me in the slightest that the volumes were higher in twenty seventeen, pre-COVID, pre-construction.
Was the path mark open in seventeen? Sorry, my quick question.
No, I don't believe it was.
Well, then shouldn't, then isn't it appropriate to consider a basis of traffic as if a supermarket was there? Because I think it's unfair to compare traffic increase against a relatively vacant site. So I mean, historically, there was a supermarket there, so I'm not.
Yeah, you have to go back to two thousand fourteen probably in order to get a decent.
The way we would typically account for that, and we have to do this in every, pretty much every traffic study, is account for either projects that are, sites that are vacant that could be reoccupied. Or sites that are approved but not yet built yet. Since twenty seventeen, there have been other projects approved by this board and the zoning board that wouldn't be in those numbers either. So there is still, one of the things that I highlighted is in the redevelopment plan, we need to make sure that a new, new traffic study is done with updated counts. That are more reflective of not only the current development in town as well, but also traffic conditions on Bloomfield Avenue now that the county has finished their improvement project.
Joe, do you also take into account the fact that Bloomfield itself, Bloomfield has built a bunch of buildings in the last couple of years, as has Verona? I mean, those buildings, if you have a viable supermarket, will be feeding into Bloomfield Avenue as well. Is that something that you?
And will also be causing traffic for people commuting, going north, south.
Yeah, and that is something that we have to take, now we'll look at, typically you would look at, say, something in Bloomfield or Verona in the general area. Now, are we going to go six towns away? Probably not. We would, we would want to look at some of stuff that's in the adjacent towns because that is going to affect traffic.
Because though that's Bloomfield Avenue is the main route to the Parkway, you know, it's the main route to two eighty going the other way, so a lot of traffic.
Well, aware of it, we do work for, we do traffic work for Glen Ridge. I do the zoning, traffic reviews for the zoning board in Bloomfield. So I know there, there's a lot going on on Bloomfield Avenue that all has to be taken into account. And to get into the, with regard to the future conditions, anything, and Langen did this in their study and any other studies would typically do this. They'll give you a no-build scenario, which also includes sort of just reoccupation of the existing site. So they will say, well, if what's there now just gets reoccupied with a supermarket and restaurant. Well, you'll comparing that amount of traffic to what you're getting in the future scenario. That's all usually done during site plan. That's not, you know, there's still a lot of moving parts that would be very difficult to pin down. That no matter what assumption I made, if I was doing a study right now, it would probably be wrong. So new counts with a new scenario, even though, yes, traffic volumes were lower, higher five years ago than they are now. That needs to all be updated and make sure that, I think that the redevelopment plan spells out that they need to do a new traffic study. They need to make these sort of considerations in the study. And then as far as, to move on, as far as the the trip generation and the amount of traffic. What Langen did was pretty, you know, pull out that I T E trip generation manual that I'm sure you've heard us all reference a hundred times. And for the most part, they put, took their numbers right out of the I T E manual. They took a small, a fifteen percent credit on the residential for mass transit, realizing that there are train stations nearby. And that's a reasonable number, almost fairly conservative number to use for that. So the numbers that they were using as far as number of trips are, make sense. They're well within line of what everybody else would do for those sorts of of numbers. And then when you get into the actual analysis, the level of service C here, D there, it's, when it's redone, there's got to be more consideration to both pedestrian and bicycle traffic. And queuing that we see a lot in these traffic studies, and I'm sure you're all experiencing it on Bloomfield Avenue. I did when I drove in here today. That when we do traffic counts, we count them, we count the number of cars that go through the light. If the light turns green and there's nowhere and up past the signal is a parking lot, that there's cars stopped already. If the light turns green and you can't move, I can't, I don't count that. We only count the cars when they pass. So the analysis needs to consider how bad the queue is forming behind the light so that that, those numbers can be added into the analysis. Because you get an intersection that you're sitting there four times through the light and I can do my count and say, well, only twenty-seven cars got through. Well, that's because there, there was nowhere for them to go once they got to the intersection. So that's all stuff that needs to be, make sure that a formal traffic study takes all of that into account. And along with that, keep in mind, there is, we want something walkable. We want something bikeable, that there is going to be a trade-off. I'll be honest, the, with Bloomfield Avenue, that was a big trade-off that the county considered when they put in those improvements. They started to prioritize pedestrian volumes with wider crosswalks and bump outs to shorten pedestrian crossings. Tried to make it safer and more pedestrian friendly. And honestly, that was at expense of the motorists. That if the crosswalks are longer, that means you need longer clearance times to get through the light. You're taking that time from the cars and giving it to pedestrians. So that's a balancing act that you have to think about as you look at this whole project. That it's not just moving cars quickly through Bloomfield Avenue. We have to keep it safe and keep pedestrians under consideration as well. And then the one thing that I, other thing that I did identify, the two-way bike lane on Glenwood, that, or Glen Ridge, I'm sorry. The signal at Grove and Glen Ridge is going to need a full replacement because of those bike lanes. We're going to be moving the curb back. You're going to be taking out signal equipment. So as you're thinking about all of this as a whole, is that signal will need to be replaced? So now's the time to consider if anything else needs to be done at that intersection. If there's requirements in that list of all the amenities and public interests that you want in this project. That signal has to be replaced for that bike lane. So if there's anything else that needs to be done there, now is the time to consider it. If it's bump outs for pedestrian access or slightly different configuration, now's the time to include that. So that it gets into the redevelopment plan, so the developer knows it's something they have to consider. Because otherwise, you're going to get, developer's going to put a, a new traffic light and pretty much try and keep the intersection as similar to what it is now. And then you're going to have that light for another fifty years. Because once it's built, it's not going to be, typically don't get replaced for fifty years. We're good at building traffic lights. Once we build them, they s, they stay there for a long time.
So I have two questions. I didn't see that Langen's engineering study, uh, sorry, traffic study, unless I missed this. Separated out the traffic that will be going into that main plaza, which is also like a pedestrian plaza. I'm interested in safety. We're going to have a lot of cars going in there. And, you know, I'd be curious to see what a study would reveal because it's supposed to be a pedestrian-oriented plaza. So would that typically be something you'd do? How many cars go in? How many cars go out?
And that's, that's what I alluded to in the beginning is we need to have a bet, need to have a firm understanding of what that is going. And you're right, the the Langen study pretty much looked at more of a global, okay, look at these intersections. Make sure the roadway network can handle the amount of traffic. But as far as whether or not, how many cars are going into that plaza, that hasn't really been determined. A lot of that will have to do with where the parking ends up, where.
Well, safety measures too. Is that something you recommend or how does that work?
Um, usually that gets dealt with during site plan, the specifics of whether it's bollards or turn restrictions or islands. I think the design of that plaza will dictate a lot of that because it's not real, it doesn't appear to be meant as primarily as a vehicular area. It's meant more to be as a public open space, that there's a path for cars to get through when, when appropriate. I don't necessarily know that, I didn't think, and Ira and Keenan can correct me, that it was never intended to be a constant loop for vehicles. But you wanted, they wanted a design that they could bring a food truck into. They could bring a, a truck in for loading if need be or for emergency access. You wanted something that if you needed to get an ambulance in there for any reason, that there's a way to accommodate it. The pavement's there. It's demarcated that you're not putting benches or anything else in that area. But it's not meant to be, okay, everybody who's going to the shopping, the grocery store is going to pull into that little area. Because I don't know it would handle it.
So we should talk.
Well, I have a second question, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, just to finish up. So did you look at or have any ideas about the, where the post office is crossing into the new building? Which I, you know, as I said, that's a big hub where people come to that post office. And in my view, they will be crossing over to get into this, you know, supermarket or the retail stuff that's there. Did you give any consideration to safety measures at that area? So you talked about the new light, traffic light, but that's right in the middle of the block. People are not going to walk to the traffic light. They're going to try to cut across. Is there anything that you, ideas about that?
I haven't given it a lot of thought. I know when we reviewed this back in twenty seventeen or so, that was a major concern then as well. There may need to be some adjustments if we're going to have a parking, parking lane and then the, the, the two-way cycle track. That there may need to be some additional separation. Given the distance between intersections and the light, a mid-block crosswalk probably wouldn't make a lot of sense. Just because you'd have intersection, crosswalk, another mid-block, another intersection. It may end up having to be that you need to make that crossing across Glen Ridge at Grove Street at that light as attractive as possible. To encourage people as best they can to use the crossing that's there.
Another question. What about the flow of tractor trailers and delivery trucks for the supermarket? Really, supermarkets have a pretty regular flow. You've got the giant trucks coming up. Has all of that been taken into account also?
I don't think any of that has been figured out yet unless these gentlemen know something I don't. I don't think they've looked at, tried to figure out exactly how big the loading docks need to be, that that would typically be something that's dealt with during site plan.
You know, and even how it's going to impact traffic for coming, coming, getting there and then being navigating in and out of however it's configured.
Based on this plan, pretty much the tractor trailer traffic would have to come behind buildings B, A and B off of Glen Ridge. There's really no other access. I'm presuming that's the way it was intended. So that they would have to come into Glen Ridge and either back into the loading docks or move maneuver through there behind the building.
Yeah, and then it's not only the tractor trailers, but you have regular like, not, not even Amazon, but supplies to the supermarkets. Like bread dealers and soft drink dealers that don't come through on the track, that have their own smaller delivery trucks that flow in and out of there also. You know, it's, 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 it's a different kind of traffic with the supermarket. It's pretty regular, just so that they maintain their stock.
And the benefit to that is because it's regular, that's predictable, they can, they know what size trucks they get. They know how many of these trucks they get. So it can be designed for. At this point, in this stage in the, the plan, exactly where they go or how many there are, we don't know. And honestly, we wouldn't until we start getting into testimony in a site plan from a developer that knows. Okay, well, this supermarket gets nine tractor trailers a week and a soda delivery every Tuesday and Friday, or whatever those numbers are.
So what, what happens when we have this plan and we have, you know, our, our redevelopment plan and we've got something? And it, and at the end of the day, there's too much going on in terms of traffic to be able to really safely or efficiently accommodate everything. Then what happens? We, we have a problem, right?
I mean, that's something that, what you can put into the redevelopment plan is thresholds that they have to maintain. You know, a certain level of service, a certain amount of circulation. And if they can't figure out how to, and this would be with any development plan. They either need to improve the intersections in the areas so that it does work. Or reduce the size of the development to, to a point where it can work. That's.
Do we have that? And do we have those provisions in our current plan?
So that we have some definitive thresholds that they have to meet.
So on the basis of double second-hand hearsay.
Got to get it right.
I'm in hot water already. I can, I can say that the, having spoken to the architectural team, the redeveloper, the geometry that would accommodate the trucks. That the grocer with a letter of intent reports they need, that the space is there for access and turning beneath building B, not visible to Glen Ridge. And I know conversations have already begun or maybe gone quite a ways as far as the importance of timing. So it's wise for you to bring up that the redevelopment plan can create some guardrails for timing of delivery or sizes of trucks and when they come and when they don't come. I think that's reasonable, but I wanted the board to know that the same kind of thoughtfulness that you've seen in the design. It exists within the infrastructure underlying the project as well.
See, because the thing is, I, I believe you. I mean, I, I suspect that the supermarket problems are going to be able to be solved for. But the problem is stepping back from the supermarket, you just look at this with the three hundred seventy-five residential units and a lot of office space and all of this retail. And you're saying to yourself, the magic car ferry is not going to deposit these cars and then get them out. And I've not seen any either rendering or report that indicates to me where the people are going in, where they're coming out. And how it's going to impact. Again, we want to have a, we, we know there's going to be something on this site that's going to be better than what it is now. I mean, it, this is not about turning it into a park. We, we know that there's going to be resident mixed use. But, but, but the, the logistics of it are hugely important. And I, I don't know where it, I don't know where it is and I don't, and I don't want to wait till the site plan stage. Because, because this is, this is what we're doing and it is, well, I mean, this is, this has, somebody said this is, this is almost like a site plan and it kind of is. But I mean, if, we're talking about a number of parking spaces, number of buildings, number of units and a lot of cars.
So we have to establish really good guard, guardrails, as you put it, with respect to, you know, the flow of traffic and, and the service at the intersections. to, you know, the flow of traffic and, and the service at the intersections, you know, what level of service has to be maintained at the intersections. And maybe that's how we, maybe that's how we address it.
The, the counts here are kind of divorced from any context in the sense that I know that, for example, in the AM peak hour, there's going to be 286 new in trips. But I don't know how many trips are going on ancillary to that, right? Like Bloomfield Avenue is one of the busiest streets in the county, presumably carrying thousands of cars a day. What is 300 new cars in the context of Bloomfield Avenue carrying thousands of cars a day?
So keeping in mind that these numbers are peak hour, this is morning rush hour, evening rush hour. Um, I don't have the exact numbers with me, but Bloomfield Avenue right now, for that type of road, you're looking at around between 1,500 and 2,000 cars in each direction, peak hour.
So in one hour, you're getting 1,500 cars in each direction? So 3,000 going both directions?
Say 3,000 cars are going past Grove Street and at, in the peak hour now, and you'd be adding another, you know, 200 to 300 to that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I just want to reiterate the, the concept of guardrails, whether it's for traffic or anything else, of, of giving, giving the, you know, the, the approach that this board and that the community want is really important because as much as we talk about the current property owner, this redevelopment plan will live beyond the current property owner. And, you know, assuming things go through and smoothly, great. But if they don't, whatever we put on paper here is what we're stuck with unless we modify it down the road. So I, while I appreciate, uh, whatever the term we're using, um, here. Unsworn double hearsay. While I appreciate that, it's, it's important to recognize that that, you know, the, the current property owner may not ultimately be the person redeveloping the site. We just saw this four years ago. So we need to keep that in mind as we look to this. And, and that goes also to this concept of heights, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. But the idea with the master plan and our discussions is that if we were to zone this area outside of redevelopment planned at four stories and 47 feet, I think it was, somebody can always come in and say, hey, I've got a better idea and I think I can do five stories and this is how. And that was our, that was our concept in the master plan. Um, somebody could come in and say, I can do six stories because here's the, the public good that I'm going to have, and here's the bonuses that I want, and here's why. And we were open to that. And so I think looking at it from that concept is, is another important point for this plan, that we may want to look and say, here's your maximum at five stories and so many feet. But if somebody comes in with a really great plan that says, yeah, I think I could put six here and here's why, and here's what we're going to get out of it, I think that's received a lot differently than starting out at what seems to be the max.
So what's the relevance to this context then?
What's the relevance to that discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so rather than perhaps say, in this instance, we can do, what was it, 87 feet? Maybe it's more like we have the guardrail of five stories and however many feet. And if somebody wants to come in later on and say, I, I want a, a waiver, I think is what it is from redevelopment plan, then we can hear it in that context rather than just granting it right now.
Okay, I don't think that's legally permissible. I mean, you can't grant a de- variance from a redevelopment plan.
Yeah, wouldn't think.
Okay. Well, I thought it was a good idea.
To put on my developer hat for a second, a big part of what the developers like of a redevelopment plan is they know going into that, that they're in front of the planning board and that they have a prescribed set of regulations, that if they meet all of the regulations, the board has to approve it. Or if the...
They always want changes.
Right.
They never come here with, oh, we beat all the plans.
I've, you know, a number of the projects that I do on the developer side, it's always, we have to make sure it stays in the planning board because going to the zoning board triggers a lot more risk.
Right.
And having a redevelopment plan keeps them with the planning board.
Anywhere traffic questions?
I have a question related to, we spoke about, um...
So I, I think it's hard to do the trade-offs, but is there any, this is more of a question for Arthur, I guess, because again, I'm just looking at the master plan and what we've got in the master plan to compare it to. The master plan does call for an active neighborhood or whatever, I, I forget exactly what it says, which means some open space. Are we allowed to say, whatever you do, you need, you need two acres of open space, two and a half, done. So then we don't have to worry about this trade-off of, well, if you do this, so if, if we think, and I don't know if, if the master plan has that language in it, which requires that. So, because it's hard to, I mean, it seems sort of unfair that we have to make this trade-off. I mean, the, the open space is great, so require it.
I, I think the, the master plan is more of a, a looser policy statement.
So there's nothing, so the answer is no.
It's up to you as the board to interpret it.
And you're always making trade-offs.
Yeah.
Always.
Well, okay, then, then I guess the follow-up comment is, um, I can, I can speak personally on this. I'm not necessarily too concerned about the height based on what I can see, but I would like to see more to confirm. You know, I'm a little bit more concerned with just the general base of the buildings and how broad they are. I'm not too concerned about just the, the very, the height. And I'd like to see that in proportion to the base. So I, it's...
I heard you, you're, you're, you want to see the pedestrian view of these buildings in context of the neighborhood? Okay.
All right, if we don't have any other questions, uh, with respect to, uh, traffic, then if Jerry can come up?
Thanks, Joe.
Yes, thank you.
Wow.
There's not much, there's not much really to chew on with the parking. They, they really didn't, um, you know, there's not a lot, not a lot to talk about. Um, I did look at the Langen report and they do have a theoretical building program that included 333 residential units, a 47,000 square foot supermarket, 50,000 square feet of retail, which included some restaurant space, and 100,000 square foot office. Now, if they were to use the numbers in the redevelopment plan and not share any of the parking, just every, every use has its own parking that designated, they would need 1,100 spaces. If they use the shared parking, if they said that all these parking facilities are going to be shared among all the different uses, so if I'm a resident and I pull out of my spot, anyone can pull back into that spot. If they're going to share all the spots, the parking need according to the redevelopment plan would be about 925. So, you know, we're talking about a parking supply in the neighborhood of 925 to 1,100 spots. Again, we don't know how they're distributed among the site, um, on either, either side of Grove Street. But, you know, we're assuming that, um, you know, there's a lot of bill, a lot of parking under these buildings. So... It's got to be more than, it's got to be multi-level parking to, to get to those numbers.
Are you familiar with, um, a supermarket concept where they would have shopping carts in a parking area on a multi-level, um, supermarket parking deck?
Yeah, they, they, they do it in Bloomfield at the Food Town, but that's a, that's not a full, that's not a full supermarket.
Right.
They do have some, uh, some cart corrals in there. And I know they were supposed to have an attendant, uh, on-site at, uh, at all times to clear carts that were rolling around in the parking garage. It was a big concern. Uh, so I would think that's something similar would have to happen here.
But that's your, that's your only familiarity with this type of scheme here?
Yeah, it's, it's not a, it's not a common, uh, model.
Yeah, it's more, more common in...
More common in Manhattan, uh, in the city stores.
Yeah, and in Queens. I've seen it in a number of locations in Queens as well.
So it, it's 10:30 and I'm getting punchy, so I'm just going to come right, right to a tough question. Um, the plan in its shared parking arrangement presupposes that from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, the residential is going to be 60% occupied. The source cited in that report doesn't have a date on it, so I helpfully looked myself. The report, the New Jersey Parking Matters report that that cites is dated 2006, and it itself cites an earlier study with an unknown date. So whatever number we're coming up with, for that, whatever source we're using for that 60% is older than 2006. And I'm here to tell you, it ain't right. There, it's, there are going to be more than 60% occupied. And so whatever we're doing here, when we, when it comes time to, as my chairman says, park it, um, the numbers that we're going to have to use for the shared parking, I, I intend to recommend that we assume a higher occupancy for the residential than 60%, because I think the six, the 2006 figures don't work in 2023, '4, et cetera. And so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that that, the source that cited for that 60% is out of date and I think not reflective of today's reality. And so if, if, you know, whatever the, the lots that we're talking about for a shared parking arrangement, if we have to assume more cars are going to be there in the residential unit, for the residential units during the peak daytime hours, and we need to assume that we're also going to have 100% occupancy for the offices and whatever we assume for the retail, the numbers are going to look very different because that 60%, that 40% drop, you're counting on it in ways that I'm not comfortable with you counting on it, I don't about my colleagues.
Well, the, he said the total without shared spaces is 1,100 and with shared spaces in 925. So we have a clear number of what the difference is there, which is 175 cars or spaces. Um, I think going to the public space conversation, there's a clear trade-off here between space for cars and space for people, right? If we're building space for cars, we are not using that space for people. And I think people should be the priority of any redevelopment plan because that's who's going to be using this space, occupying this space. 925 parking spaces is three times the midtown deck. That's huge. That's a ton of parking. And there's going to be a ton of stuff here and a ton of use and that's, that's, it's going to be necessary to have a lot of parking. But I just want to keep it in the context of this is a place for people and any space taken up by cars is space we can't use for people. And if we have 87 and a half feet, that's a lot of feet. If we take away some of the space for cars, maybe we can bring that lower and still have these six stories that the developer wants, that the parking, uh, that the supermarket needs. I just want to keep that context here. Space for cars is not space for people.
And I would just like to say that if, um, indeed there is not enough space, parking spaces for this project on-site, then the overflow goes to the little neighborhoods around there, which is really unfair to the neighborhoods. These are small residential streets, narrow streets with two, three-family, one-family houses, and that's really not fair to burden them with, uh, parking from this project.
On the, on the 60%, uh, you, you make a, you make a good point. Um, we're all trying to figure out what the impacts of the pandemic have been. Uh, we're, we're starting to see pre-pandemic numbers on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, Mondays and Fridays, not so much. People are working from home on Mondays and Fridays. Uh, offices, uh, a lot of them are not back to, uh, full work weeks. So, um, so it's, it's a number that's currently in flux.
It's also, it's, you're right, and I agree with all of it, but it's also the fact that we're, we're building this with the idea that people are going to live there and then maybe commute by train. And so it, there's just a lot of reasons why the 60% number from 2006 is just not, is just not a, a current reality. But I, you know, I, I agree with my colleague, obviously, that if, you know, a space you're using for a car is not a space you're using for a person. The problem is we want the supermarket to be viable. We want, we want the project to work. And so we're, we're saying the same thing, which is that we need a lot of spaces. We, we don't want more spaces than we need, but we want the spaces we need.
Now, I just want to add that the redevelopment plan does say that the, that the redeveloper must submit a, uh, share, if they intend to use shared parking, they have to submit a shared parking report by a qualified expert. So that expert, we're going to have to vet his numbers and his methodology and how he determines how the sharing is going to happen.
What do you say, Mr. Diosa, that the impact of the, it's a pandemic, that more people work at home means that they own a car, but they're not, it's in its parking space? Or that people who are, must own a car because they do more than work, that if they're at work by, going by train, that their car is in their parking space? And that that may have an impact on the shared parking availability of spaces?
Yes, that, that the shared parking dynamic is, is not as robust as it once was because cars are sitting in a parking garage all day while, while the person is working from home.
We have some test cases in Montclair. We've got, um, shared parking that was...
At the Wellmont? So you could look at that and see how that's going? I mean, there's 200 units of housing there, office. So that's a good benchmark.
We seem to have a lot of people moving. Seem to have a lot of people moving from, from, uh, outside of the state, wanting to take advantage of our excellent commute into the city. Um, but needing a car here on the weekend so that they can do shopping and, and do the other things. So if there's any other sources...
But they're going to go to the grocery store that's in the...
Well, I was going to say...
It was an attempt at a joke. I failed. It's fine.
Plus you're...
If there's any, if there's any other recent sources, you know, not only in this area, but in other areas too, that might reflect on how that trend, um, is with all the developments of all these transit villages now, you know?
Plus in town, we've built luxury housing for the most part, luxury rentals. Some people in that income bracket will have a car. I mean, that's what I think.
At least one.
At least one, if not two.
I've got some good data from Marstown, um, you know, that personally in my office that I could, you know, share with you guys and bring to this study. But, uh, but nothing in, in Montclair. But I'd, I'd love to have some numbers from some of the projects, you know, that, uh, that have gone over, over the past few years.
We'd love to also.
So maybe if there's any way that we can do it.
People staying home to work. If there's an office space, it's not going to work if people don't drive to it. So...
And a supermarket, it's not going to work if people don't drive to pick up their food, right? So it might be that you just look at how much more demand is, how much, how much less available parking is in the apartment number because people are working from home. And that's...
So from, from what I'm hearing, there may be a good reason to increase that percentage at 60% so that, because it's really not being shared as much as it was previously.
I think you could look at Wellmont.
Not much available, not as much available for Sharon.
I mean, if you look at Wellmont, that'll give you some good, that's probably full.
Is it fully rented? Uh, yeah, it is.
To kind of counterbalance this, if we're concerned about people not going into the office, is the medical office, or is the professional office going to be 100% occupied? Right? And so...
In this day and age, they wouldn't be renting more space unless they're going to occupy.
Sure, but is it going to be 100% occupied with parking?
Is the parking...
Yeah, is the parking going to be 100% occupied in the same way that the apartments are going to be more occupied, the office will offset? Just something to consider in that calculation.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
We don't have any other questions, right?
You don't do bike parking, do you? Do I talk to you about that? You don't do bike parking too. Do I talk to you about that for the plan?
I'm afraid not. Maybe Joe might be able to help you with that. I can see what I can find.
Anything would be great. Just one spot, one bike parking spot for every 10 apartments feels like not a lot. Um, when bikes take up so little space, you can fit about 12 in one car parking spot. So...
I think...
Experience leader, where do we go from here? I was looking at you.
Well, uh, we need, we've got a number of things that we need additional feedback on. And Janice should have a summary.
I've got a lot of notes here. Visibility of the supermarket is a problem. We've got to figure out a way to address that in the redevelopment plan through discussions. Height? That was obviously a concern. We need to talk about that. It's a much broader issue. The view from- I have specifics. Look at the view from Clover Hill of this project. Look at the view from the post office towards the right of this project.
And I believe, as Tony put it, like a drive-around view? Just to see.
Height and height and height. What kind of guardrails can we put into the plan to address traffic issues? I think I mentioned those. Let's flesh them out even more, because I think you added some additional ones today that we didn't have. Additional items, perhaps including a requirement for an enhanced crosswalk at Grove Street, because that signal at Glen Ridge Avenue will need to be replaced. There was a discussion about loading. Perhaps we can get more information on that and put in requirements in the redevelopment plan for loading so that when the plan comes before us, we can have requirements for the frequency and location of the loading areas, embellish what we have in there right now. Traffic thresholds, I think I already said that. And rethinking the shared parking ratios. Is the 60% be increased? Those are the broad items I have.
Can I add something?
Yeah, signage.
Signage and wear-
Right.
The 15% for the short-term rental?
We didn't eat- Okay, yeah.
For the parking, is that going to be separate parking? Is that-
Well, I thought with short-term rentals, it's based on bedroom. And that would be- it's considered a residential unit, and the parking would be based on the number of bedrooms in that short-term rental.
It would be like, just like any other residential unit from a parking standpoint.
And just with, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how workable this would be, but understanding that the supermarket purveyor that has signed the LOI, that doesn't want to identify itself yet, which I completely understand, I would consider whether there's a way for that entity to engage a consultant who can come and give live testimony about what's going on with that supermarket's thinking. Because that person wouldn't need to identify his or her client. But there are a lot of questions that the supermarket purveyor knows the answers to, that having it come through you, again, you're being completely- you're doing it in an above-board, good-faith way, I have no doubt. But there's questions you can't answer because you don't know and it's not your business. And so if there's a way for that entity to come in through a cutout, that could end up being beneficial to all of us, because that- I don't know that there's a way to make it work, but that- because it would cost a little money for the supermarket, but I think it would be money well spent.
We'll look into that.
Is that like the masked supermarket purveyor? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Very good.
With a paper bag, with a reusable plastic bag over that.
They make the mistake and it's got that agenda.
So-
Really punchied out, because it's-
So I know we have another meeting next Monday, and we'll see, you know, what answers we can get between now and Monday on these questions.
And I had a couple of questions that I didn't pose, so I'll send them to you, maybe.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and the same goes for anybody else on the board, too, if there's other questions.
Yeah, whatever. What I'm trying to do is I want to compile a master list of questions and issues that we can put into one report.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right.
What's to pay bills?
If it's the right time.
I think so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another question. So in our packet before we pay bills was this thing from the council about sustainable, you know, whatever. I forget what it's called.
Yes.
I can't find it at the moment. But there's nothing in there about historic preservation or adaptive reuse of buildings, which I would think should be in some kind of sustainability statement. But I guess they've already signed it.
It was just sent to me for information purposes only. Keith, was the sustainability resolution- was that- did that come from the Environmental Commission? It was in your packet.
Yeah.
And the council then sent it to all department heads, and I thought that's something that would be good to send to you. Resolution 22-251, Resolution Regarding Sustainable Land Use Pledge. Did that come from the Environmental Commission? I assumed it did.
I'm not sure. But I don't think so.
Anyway, I thought it was for-
Yeah, that doesn't look familiar.
It looks like something that we would need for the sustainable jersey application.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering. If maybe it came from sustainable jersey, but not necessarily from the Environmental Commission. So it might have come from the green team.
Okay, it could be. I just, again, it was just emailed to me by the clerk's office, and I thought it'd be good to know.